That my.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. First day of meteorological spring. Winter is soon be winter weather is soon behind us. It's being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. We do have two hearings on the agenda tonight. We have a hearing scheduled for 7:15, which we will get to as soon as we finish these preliminary. Remarks for the Needham Farmers Market. And then we have another public hearing immediately after that with regard to Wing Gate Development at. At the property at Highland Avenue and Gold Street. First, we will confirm that there's a quorum of the members of the planning board present when I call your name. Please respond that you are present. Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Gene McKnight.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
The Chair is present. Natasha Espada could not be here tonight, so we have four of the five planning board members present tonight. We have a quorum. Now I will introduce our town staff, our Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planning Director Alexandra Clea.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants. We're here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website. WWW.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, question, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who was recognized to speak. Please remember to state your name and address for the rec and address stress that please for the record. Before speaking. That concludes our introductory remarks. We can now move on to our first public hearing that was scheduled for 7:15. This is an application for a major project site plan special permit. It will be special permit number 2002, 2022 dash oh one. Took us until March 1st to get to oh one. Needham Farmers Market. Regarding the property locating at Greensfield in Needham. Request to operate a farmer's market on the portion of Greensfield on a portion of Greensfield on Sundays. This year because of the renovations on Town Common. Our panelists for this meeting are Mr. Jeffrey Friedman, who was the President of Needham Farmers Market. And Lisa Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa Chaboulias. Who is a Needham Farmers Market Board Member. And I see Lisa has joined us. Is Jeff? Is Jeff coming, Alex?
So Jeff is here. Jeff, if you can hear me. Trying to promote promote you to a panelist, you might have to. Sometimes people are prompted. To whether they want to be a panelist, you might have to say yes or no to putting how the question is framed.
I had to accept that.
Okay, yeah, so. Tried multiple times now.
You said, do you know if if Jeff wants you to run the show tonight, or are you waiting for him as well?
I think he's participating, but we can, if you know, in the interest of keeping to your schedule, we can start and he might be able to hear us and chime in. I'm not sure.
And the other thing I can do is allow him to speak from the attendee. Side of things which.
Oh, there he is.
Yes, right.
Jeff, you may have to turn on your. Video and you certainly have to unmute yourself. Jeff, if you can't. Turn on your video, at least unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, just as well. Well.
I've seen you. I know what you look like.
Well, thank you very much. So good evening. My name is Jeff Friedman, President of Needham Farmers Market. As you know, with me.
I'm sorry, Jeff, before we get started, this is the beginning of a public hearing. May I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the of the. Of the notice of hearing.
So moved.
Moved in second. And is there any discussion? We'll call the roll.
Well, I do have some discussion, actually.
Go right ahead.
And the reason for the discussion is. At the bottom of the second page of the notice. It says the farmer's market proposes to have a maximum 16 vendors. Which I understand from a later. Email or letter from Mr. Friedman is incorrect, should say 18 vendors. So the question that I I think this is an appropriate time to bring it up is is that. Such a defect as to require renotice. Are you asking my opinion? No.
I'm trying to find. In the notice and I'm not seeing it in the.
Actually, the notice.
Yes, it is. It is. It's it's a the it's in the third law, third last line of the second paragraph. Of the original notice.
There it is. The farmer's market proposes have a maximum of 16 vendors.
And apparently the correct number is 18. That is correct. And just for the record, I mean, it was a. A mistake, an erroneous mistake. The. I sent a letter dated February 22nd, 2022 to the the board. Do you all have that letter?
We do.
We do.
As stated in the letter, the license agreement correctly states. What you have.
Yes.
That's dated January 18th, that the farmer's market will have a maximum of 18 vendors at each market.
I see that at paragraph 1B. Of the license agreement.
Right.
I asked Marty. Marty, are you suggesting that as a formality because of that that inadvertent mistake? That we should, in fact, read the public notice so that the public is aware of what actually is proposed?
But you know, if if I have no problem reading it. My eventual question really is going to be, is it such a defect as requires renoticing? And I don't know the answer to that. Do you want me? Do you want to read it? It's not that long.
Lead. As to whether that that kind of an error requires a renoticing?
I don't have that legal answer. I'm sorry. That's really that's really up to your discretion.
Yeah, I don't know whether reading the notice. Even with the correction cures the defect because. The purpose of the notice was to. Was to give actual notice to a butters.
Right.
And to publish the notice. In the in the newspaper. So delivery, the actual notice and the publishing of the notice. Had the error. I think it's a de minimis error.
I agree. Because the issue is would a would an butter, for example, wish to oppose the a special permit? Or come to the meeting and make a comment because of the difference between 16 and 18? If they knew that it was 18, I can't imagine it would make a difference.
I'm prepared to allow it, but I'm Marty, I'm.
I think we should allow it. I don't think reading the notice makes any difference, so. I'm willing to. Entertain the motion to dispense with the reading of the notice. But Marty, if you think we should read the notice, I'll be happy to read the notice.
Well, it wasn't my idea to read it. I think Jean was asking whether I wanted it read. I don't I don't have any objection. To reading it, but I think you're right. I don't think reading it is gonna make any difference in the determination of whether it's defective notice or not.
The question is whether or not. We're able to proceed with a deficient notice.
I think it's the minimalist deficiency and we should proceed. I think that I think I I think that sufficient legal notice. Was given. If we were dealing with a lot more than two out of 18. Vendors in the list. I mean, if if there were going to be 40 vendors and it said 16, I'd say we had a defective notice. But but I don't. I I think I think the butters and anybody reading this in the newspaper was given sufficient notice. Of. What the petition is here. For them to decide whether they. They want to be here tonight for them to decide whether they want to look at the materials on our website. Where they would have seen. That it was an error of 16 to 18 and 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 this is a public hearing. If somebody if somebody in the audience has an objection because. Because it said eight, because it said 16 in the notice and it winds they they get here and find out that it's 18. They can raise that tonight and we'll have to deal with that. That's. If it's raised.
And I also think that the. Additional subject of the notice relates to the change of venue. Not just not just the number of vendors, but the change in venue. And that, you know, and and new dates and so forth. So I I would regard that I'm Marty, if if you're prepared to go along with it, I would also regard that. Inadvertent error is a de minimis. Error.
The the point of my raising it was to to. Call for some discussion.
And I think it's important that you raise it. I think it's important that it be in in the record. That we notice the error and we're discussing it. And.
There is a there is a motion on the floor already, which is to waive the reading. Are you? Which has been seconded.
Right.
So that's the motion you think we need to deal with.
Yes. Are we prepared to take a vote or resume more discussion? I don't hear any more discussion. We'll take the vote. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. We have. Waived the requirement of reading the notice of hearing. And we have discussed and. An error in the notice of hearing of the number of vendors. That it states 16 when it should have stated 18 and we have determined it to be a de minimis error.
Do you want to do that by vote?
I think that's a good idea.
I move. That the. Number of vendors as noticed from 16. Is a de minimis error and that the intent has been to be 16 to be 18 vendors instead of 16. And further move that we continue with the hearing.
I'd like to add to that that. That this board finds. That the notice of hearing. Gives sufficient notice of the requested relief.
So amended.
Second.
Check it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will take the vote. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Jeff, sorry, that took an extra 10 or 15 minutes. You now have the floor.
I I have to apologize for for the error. And as soon as I I was rereading it and I was aghast to see that I had made a mistake. So, you know. The same day that I discovered it, I. Wrote that letter to the board just to bring it to their attention of what our. What my our intent was that is of the board of Needham Farmers Market. So if I could just. Give my remarks to the board.
Please do.
Thank you. So as we talked before, I'm the President of Needham Farmers Market and with me is Lisa Sherbalay, Board Director. Who was in charge of the vendors and has many other duties. For its 11th season, the market has applied for a special permit. To operate on a small portion of Greensfield. For this year only from June 12th to November 20th. For the five previous years. The market was located on Garrity's Way in the Town Common. Due to the town renovating the common this year. The market must relocate to a new temporary location. Greensfield is a park facility under the administration of Needham Park and Recreation. The Commission for Park and Rec. Approved the market's application to use Greensfield. Thereafter. The market signed the license agreement with the town. Dated January 18, 2022 for use of Greensfield, which has been filed with the board. The the two letters, other than that one mistake, the two letters that I sent to the board. Give details on the operation of the market. But in addition, you obviously, well, should take in account. The license agreement. With the town, which is the agreement with the town in terms of the use of the land. And the conditions with it. The the letter to, there are a few changes, but basically the license agreement. Is the same license agreement. That Needham Farmers Market has had with the town for the previous five years. And I'm proud to say, you know, giving credit to. The board and to our market manager that we've not had any problems, you know, in terms of injuries. And. Problems with the Health Department, etc. Everything is, you know, we've complied completely. And we go out of our way, of course, to comply with the requirements of the Health Department. And of the town, as you can see in the license agreement. So the the terms are stated. You know, in those two letters and also in the license agreement. Needham Farmers Market is a community-based 501 and 501(c) nonprofit. It provides fresh and local healthy food. Like corn, tomatoes. Bread and pastry, meat and sea and seafood to Needham residents. As well as contributing to community life with local musicians and local artists. As a result of the unique circumstances this year. With the market forced to relocate due to the renovation of the common. The very high costs already incurred by the market with the application process, we've spent at least 700 hours. With expenses involving the the application process. And finally, the the anticipated expenses related to Needham to Greensfield, the Greensfield location. Such as new tents. Yard signs, new yard signs, marketing, etc. Needham Farmers Market requests that the board waive. The $1,000 application fee. Which would be a prohibitive and owner's expense for us. The board has weighed the application fee many times before. For Needham Farmers Market. From its beginning. And, you know, in terms of going back to the very beginning, which was 2012 and. Those who have agreed to the wave the fee are Jean, Marty, and I believe Paula Alper too. But I know definitely Jean and Marty have done that previously. And I don't think Adam. I don't believe that you go back that far. But I'm glad to see you on the board, really. It's good to see not attorneys on the board. Seriously, you you bring a different perspective.
Which is. Jeff, we got it. We got to keep them guessing.
I want to state for the record that I know for a fact that Jeff Friedman is an attorney.
And if it's appropriate at this time. Let me make a motion that in consideration. Of the service to the community provided by Needham Farmers Market. That we waive the $1,000 special permit application fee.
Second.
Okay, we can. Excuse me. Okay, um. Yeah, we we can, I believe, I believe that we can take up that. That motion now. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will take a vote on. Whether to waive the $1,000 application fee. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
As the non-lawyer who seconded the motion, aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion passes, the fee is waived.
Thank you very much. Lisa, would you like to say something relative to the application, anything?
I know. I think you've well stated it that we're looking to move to Greensfield because of the renovation and we appreciate the opportunity to keep the continuity of this. Market, which is, I think, increased in popularity as we're in such a visible spot. And that's really one of the things that this location offers. I'm actually sitting at the Y by coincidence. But it does give us, because we've talked to Paula Jacobson, the ability to be next to this other gem of Needham, which is the Y. And have access to the facility here, which is a nice plus for visitors and we're next to the field, which is great for anyone who comes with kids. So we're looking forward to next year and think we can continue to be a good service to the community.
Thank you. If. If the board has any questions, you know, we would be receptive and answer them. Lisa has a very. Definite knowledge of the operation of the market because she deals with the market. She's not only and she in addition is a vendor. For many years. So she she knows how in 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 terms of the various locations that we've been other than the first location, which was on the front lawn of First Parish. But other than that, Lisa's been a vent, both a vendor and, you know, and now a member of the board.
Um, okay. I just have just one question. It's first of all, I I want to state that the. In my opinion, the license agreement is is excellent and all inclusive and. And I thank you for your letters, Jeff. They were. They they were. Again, all inclusive of the requirements that we have for site plan review. My only practical question is, have the dates changed? Is June 12th later than you usually open?
For a while, we opened in May at the last weekend of May and we found that there wasn't enough fresh produce available. Customers would show up expecting to have corn and tomatoes. They didn't realize it's not when those products are ripe. So we moved it to mid-June and this has been the same start day we've had for two years, mid-June. And then it goes until the end of. October for regular vendors. We just have our two vegetable vendors on up till Thanksgiving. And that's been consistent with every year up to now.
Oh, also in prior years, I know the last few prior years, you were able to. To use the the outdoor outlets for. To be able to have electricity because you had some vendors who who had refrigerated trucks. Are you able to continue that this year? Or have you lost the use of 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 electricity and therefore losing? Losing the ability to have those vendors this year?
I can answer that question. So that was, of course, a concern, electricity necessity, because some of our vendors, in fact. Have refrigerated bins or contain. Methods, they have to refrigerate their food. It's required by the. The plant of the Health Department. So I had contacted Barry DuLong, Director of the Building of Building Maintenance for the Town. About, you know, the installation of electrical outlets. At Greensfield as we're actually a very small portion of Greensfield. It's. You've seen probably the map, I hope, you know, is meaning the location. So it's those two intersecting walkways. So, you know, I gave Barry. You know, a layout of where the vendors would be, etc. And. So then. You know, and I was waiting to hear from him and he had contacted the town electrician Sean Rego. And. So I actually was able to talk to Sean. He gave me a call. He's very busy. But he assured me that he could do it. And, you know, I mentioned to him the location, etc. And he was knowledgeable about it. And he indicated to me that he could install the outlets at all the locations where I thought the vendors would be. And that he would do it in the spring.
Great. Glad to hear it.
Yeah, that was a relief, actually.
Those are all my questions. Adam, you have your hand raised, so I'll call on you first. Go right ahead.
Thanks, Paul. I I'm glad that we're able to find an alternative. Venue, because I know the good that you bring to the community and I have benefited from it. As well, you know, being able to get some local fresh produce and my son enjoys it going with me too. I have a couple of questions. One. I I understand that that you've gone through parks and rec to be clear. During your hours of operation, Parks and Rec has no demand for that space for any alternative purpose. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of any organized activity on these fields on Sunday from 11 to 3. There are organized sports on Saturdays. Soccer games, soccer lessons, but I'm not aware of anything on Sunday. And nobody has indicated that there's any conflict. With our use of the space we have.
So so Lisa and I had contacted Stacy Mulroy. She's Park and Rec Director. And, you know, provided all the information to her. And she and then and she when she approved it, I mean personally. And then she contacted the Commission. Which also approved, obviously important because they. They they that's their duty, their requirement to for the. But it's a little on you, probably a little unusual because of being a farmer's market, but any event to make a long story short. The the Commission did approve it and, you know, they were they weren't just involved with the in the input here. Karis Lustig, who was a DPW Director, she was involved with this whole process. Lisa and I met with her and Amy. Hey. Yeah, Houseman, the Needham Development Director. And. Before we actually had contacted Stacy. So or a little at the same time, but any event DPW had input in the whole process.
And so my next question is. What effort? I understand that parking is to really be. In the municipal lots. A little further away from here. What effort? Are you we're looking to do undertake? To ensure that there's not a. You know, a queue of cars either on Pickering or backing up on Grain Plate, Great Plain and. Some of the other neighboring streets.
Well, okay, first of all, in terms of the the Denham Municipal Parking Lot. Familiar with that, you know, the entrance. For cars is actually off Denham Avenue, of course. But the there's a walkway. At the back of the Denham Lot. To Great Plain Avenue. It's it's just adjacent to the Christian Science Church. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but there is a public walkway. Right of way, public walkway, so that so, you know, anybody who's parking in the lot. You know, can go directly from the lot to the market. And I also should note that, you know, in terms of, that would be for the vendors, but, you know, for, um, the public, you know, the general data of, of most farmers markets, you know, comparing those, which we do, we meet, I meet with other directors of, of other farmers markets. Is that, you know, usually people only spend about 15 minutes at the market. They know what they want, that they're, or repeat particularly, they come for that, and, and they leave, you know, whether it's seafood or pastry and, uh, et cetera, produce. So it's a relatively short period of time. So in terms of, you know, we will be getting notice to, to the public, you know, where they should be parking, and, um, directing them to those, those municipal parking lots. And, um, the, the location where we are is, is actually very close to Great Plain Avenue. So that, you know, it's not going to be interfering with the baseball field, or people's going, using the baseball field. And there's, you know, if you're familiar with, uh, Greensfield, if you've ever taken your kids there, you know, the, the playground is much farther up, that is in the direction of, uh, uh, May Street. So, uh, near St. John, St. Joe's. So there's not going to be any problem that we foresee, and, and we'll be educating the public where to park. And we've done that before, you know, when we were located at, uh, Garrity Way and, and, uh, the Town Common, the same thing occurred, um, and we indicated that parking should, would be, or should be over in Chapel Street Parking Lot, and there was no problem.
Thank you.
I think you're going to have some people who will tend to park in the Y's parking lot, because that's the closest. So you're gonna, I don't know whether you've had a chance to talk to the people at the Y. You probably have. This is right at the Y right now, but.
Yeah, we, we had met with Paula, um, some months ago, just inquiring about this and seeing what the, you know, what her reaction was. She was extremely supportive. And we, we didn't, we didn't discuss that, but we would be prepared to direct people to where the appropriate parking is, if that becomes a problem.
Thank you.
Yes, Gene?
Adam has finished. Uh, I just wanted to clarify one thing, or ask for clarification of one thing having to do with vendors, uh, bringing the food to the site. If they park on that lot at Denham Avenue, but they'll have to use some kind of, uh, hand carts or push carts to get their produce from their vehicle to the site. Um, is that what is anticipated? Or is it anticipated that the vendors will pull up, unload, and then go park? If, I'm a little concerned about the latter scenario. Could you explain how you will, uh, direct the vendors, uh, in that, with regard to the delivery of, of their produce and other, other for-sale items?
Well, you know, we had this experience, you know, when the farmer's market, for the prior five years, when the market was located on, um, Garrity's Way and the Town Common. And, um, some of the vendors, um, the produce, the two produce vendors particularly, would unload on Garrity's Way. And they got extra insurance for that, as required. The other vendors would unload, um, at the two entrance, the entrance and exit of Garrity Way, um, Chapel Street and mostly Chapel Street. They would unload next to the entrance there, onto Garr- Garrity's Way, if you can picture that. There are some parking spaces there. So, you, you know, we had a, you know, an agreement with the police and et cetera of the town, that, you know, the vendors, could use two spaces, actually, and for a period of time, and then just for unloading. And then they would leave, and then they would go to, in this case, the Chapel Street, um, lot. And that agreement actually was before Garrity Way. That was the agreement when, um, Farmer's Market was located on the front lawn of First Parish Church. Very similar unloading process where, you know, the vendors would unload from the street and, um, and the, the, the vendors would be located on, at that time in the front lawn, there were two, it was very similar, actually, in a way, to, um, the configuration at Greensfield. There were two intersecting walkways on the front lawn of First Parish Church. You couldn't drive onto the, the front lawn, of course. I think they would be aghast at that. No, we would never do that. And so there was unloading from the street. In that case, it was Lincoln Street or Denham Avenue. So this is going to be a replication of that. And, you know, really, um, I don't anticipate, you know, there'll be a safety problem, but, you know, we always are, you know, concerned about safety, both vehicular and pedestrian safety. And, um, and so, you know, our, you know, market manager, um, you know, anticipates, you know, the problems, whatever, and we have cones, et cetera, and, uh, it's, it, you know, particularly it's the issue really at setup. And the setup is, is long enough that, you, you know, it's not like there are backed up cars or whatever. Setup could be as long as three hours.
So you could time people for, people coming if the adequacy of, of brief parking for unloading proves to be a problem, you could time the arrival of the vendors, uh, for the setup?
We could, but as, as a practical matter, you know, in, in what happens in practice is that it, we've not had tie-ups.
I just did want to, I did want to clarify, and I think you have, that in fact, the vendors will pull up in their vehicles, unload, and, and then go park. So there will be a certain amount of, uh, of, um, use of, of on-street parking in connection with the farmer's market of, by the vendors, uh, for the brief unloading.
And, and this was the agreement with the town, uh, the police, the, the town, I, I, going way back, First Parish.
Way back, yeah. I, I did read the license agreement, but I failed to print it out and, uh, have it right here to reference. But is that dealt with in the license agreement at all?
Gene, if I may, um, in paragraph 1A of the license agreement, it states that the farmer's market is to be open for four hours from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. But the licensee is allowed up to three hours before opening, so starting at 8:00 AM, to allow its vendors to set up. And up to two hours after closing, so that brings us to 5:00 PM to break down.
No, I, I did see that. I saw the hours, yeah.
Right, right. So, so, so I would expect that the use of spaces on Great Plain Avenue by the vendors would be before the public arrives at 11 o'clock. It'll be, be, um, hope, hopefully by 10, 10:30, 10:45, they're, they're fully set up and their, and their vehicles are gone. Because they've got from 8 until, until 11:00 to pull up and park and, and unload. And then, a- a- and then after, after they close and the, the, um, the customers leave the area, the vendors then have two hours to, to pull up their trucks and, and, and break down.
Okay. Um, I have, I have questions, uh, three other questions, uh, that I hope, hope will be brief. I noticed that the Board of Health, um, wants, um, let's see, no, excuse me, it's one of the, um, neighbors who commented, or residents of the town who commented about, uh, rubbish, uh, disposal. And, uh, I understand, of course, that each vendor will make sure that all of their leftovers are, uh, disposed of. But, um, who makes sure that the grounds in general are, are completely picked up for any, for many, anything that shoppers might, uh, leave behind, um, and leave everything as left clean?
So that's the responsibility for the market manager. And the current market manager, his name is Fuvo. And, um, he's, this is, he's done it for two years now, and there's never been a problem. But he knows quick, you know, um, when the market closes, and before, after all the vendors leave, you know, that's his responsibility to clean up, to make sure, you know, there's not any refuse anywhere.
And is it taken off-site? There's, it's not that rubbish barrels there are used and might become overflowing. Is it taken off-site by the, uh, market manager?
I, he should be taking it off-site. That's definitely true with the vendors, but usually, yeah, my understanding is, and we've talked to him about it, so I, that he does do that. In other words, you know, the, the, the rubbish cans or whatever, you know, are not used.
Okay. Good, thank you. I think that answers the question that the, uh, resident asked. Now, on, um, the Board of Health's comments on toilets, um, it says, um, "The signed stated agreements must state that the establishment will allow restroom access to the public during all the hours." That's what the Board of Health says. But you, I think in your application materials, said that these establishments, um, the YMCA, Walgreens, and Bagel, Bagel's Best, will allow, uh, use of the toilet facilities by the vendors. And of course, they're there for such a very long time, that of course, they need, will need such facilities. Uh, how do you respond to the Board of Health saying that, um, your agreement should expressly state that these facilities will be open to the public?
Is Lisa still, she was yelling at that, too?
Yes, I'm still here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we are working, Paula Jacobson, we met with her of the Y back in, in the fall, and she was very amenable to having anyone use her bathroom at any time, vendor, shopper, visitor, musician, artist, anybody. Um, and she is going to give us that in writing. We feel that because of our proximity to the Y and the fact that they have, um, you know, ready access to bathrooms right here, that, that will, um, not only meet our vendors and shoppers' needs, it's way more convenient than what we had at our prior location on Garrity Way. And her hours extend before and after even our setup and our takedown. So, um, we are getting that in writing to meet the Board of Health's request.
Okay, that sounds good. But then my only other, uh, question is, uh, I, at the Town Hall, of course, it was a wonderful place to set up the musicians on the Town Hall, platform right outside the door, you know, at the top of the steps. And, um, also Garrity Way was a wonderful place for dancing. I know very well, because I've danced there many times at the farmer's market. And I've tried for me to imagine, uh, in the, and I'm looking at the plan you provided. I can see how the vendors are going to set up, and the shoppers will walk along the sidewalk. But where will the musicians, uh, set up, um, in this plan?
Well, that aspect is a work in progress, you know, but, um, I was thinking of a couple of possible places, and I want to make sure, of course, that there would be electrical outlets available for the musicians. So, um, do you remember, have you, you've been to Greensfield?
Well, yes, I've been to the playground many times and walked through Greensfield many times to get to the Y.
So there's a flagpole right at the intersection of those two walkways, right behind. If you have the, the, um, that diagram right in front of you, it's, it's right by LP, the lamppost. It's behind.
Yeah, I think I see it.
Yeah. It would be, that would, we thought that, uh, I don't know, maybe you could voice an opinion. Where do you think the best place would be?
I'm, I, I would, I would think right in the middle, yeah, right, uh, with the, you know, going towards the field from, from the lamppost you mentioned, where it's set up right.
Behind it.
You've got a pink stripe, I mean, just outside the pink stripe.
Yes, somewhere in, in, in there they would be. So it's right, you know, very close to the lamppost. And I had talked to the electrician about that too. You know, so he thought that he could manage that.
Yeah. So it won't be, it won't be as good for dancing as, um, every way. But I guess it's what we have to, uh, manage with this year. All right, those are, um, I, I only ask that question, um, because of the concern about doing any damage to the, to Greensfield and to its grass and so forth. And I know you'll have the vendors be careful, and the, the shoppers will be walking along the paved path.
Yeah.
But, um, as far as, um, you, you have to be very careful about any activity that would damage the grass and, of course, you know, people dancing on the grass isn't such a good idea. So as far as keeping that in mind when you're setting, setting that up.
Right, thank you.
Y'all set you?
All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Marty, you're next.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, a few questions. This is all going to be relative to, um, number of vendors, number of food vendors, uh, where are they going to be, et cetera. Because in, in prior years, well, let me start with the definition. Farmer's Market definition says a farmer's market is activity which is comprised predominantly of activity where farmers display and sell and bakery establishments display and sell. And in, in past years, we've, I think we've sort of interpreted predominantly as meaning 80% of the tables set up should be for vendors of food and bakery items. So the way I look at it, if you've got 18 vendors, 80% comes out to 14.4. So 14, 14 or 15 of these vendors should be food or bakery establishments selling. And no more than three or four would be for other things, such as nonprofits, artists, musicians, and market manager. But you say you want six artists. So I don't understand how all these numbers are going to fit, Jeff. Can you explain?
Well, first of all, in terms of the artists, have you been to, to the farmer's market?
I have.
Okay. So then you'll know that what we've done before on Garrity Way was that we would have, we could have up to, we would sometimes, many times, we would have two artists at one tent. So, you know, I don't know how you want to do the math, but if you're talking about area that, uh, of usage, that you would have, you, you know, the, it was consolidated because you would have two artists at one tent.
All right, so let, let me, let me see if I can get what I need from questions, okay? So you're talking about 18 vendors. Does that mean 18 tents?
18 tents?
Or tables? Where, where are these 18 going to be?
Well, we haven't laid out, you know, um, the specific location of all the tents. But I did personally, uh, you know, go out to that area and take measurements, um, along both walkways. And there is sufficient, the tents are 10 by 10, so there would be sufficient space for everybody, if, at the maximum, you know, we, we've, we laid out that number to give, you know, some, some leeway, but, you know, uh, will actually, we, 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 will, will we have 18 vendors? I don't know. But we have, um, as far as the artists concerned, um, I think that, um, the, what we may do is, and I'm not promising this, but we have to see what will happen once we get it up and running, or just before, is to have maybe a lesser number of artists and, and see how that, that works out.
Well. Okay, so first of all, you're saying that there's room for 18? Okay, so first of all, you're saying that there's room for eighteen
Yes.
Tables under tents?
Yes.
Okay, and how many are you gonna be along the area of the sidewalk closest to the ball field?
You, you mean the walkway there?
There's a walk, there's a, there's a long walkway and a short walkway. So along the walkway on the side closest to the ball field, how many of your tents and tables are gonna be on that side?
I, I can't tell you specifically because we haven't actually sat down. We've talked, I talked a little to the board about that and to our vendors. We have some vendors on our Board of Directors and to, in terms of the layout. We haven't done that. I think the closest step we've come, we agree upon at this point in time is that, you know, we have two produce vendors. And so what we're thinking of doing, they have to bring the produce. They'll probably use a buggy or a cart or something to bring the produce onto the walkway. So we were thinking of having those two produce vendors at opposite ends of, of maybe that main longer sidewalk. So, which is basically what we had at, did you go, did you go to the farmer's market at First Parish?
I was there.
So at that location, we had
But I don't really care, Jeff. I, I don't care about the guy, other locations. I'm, I'm focused on this location and this application. So I'm just trying to figure out where these eighteen tables under tents are gonna go. And you, you basically, you're telling me you think you can fit them, but you haven't figured it out yet, right?
Not specifically. I told you that I went physically out to, and I measured the distance on the long walkway and the distance on the short walkway. And when you, when I added it up, assuming that, you know, you had the maximum number of artists and vendors, which I doubt in reality will probably happen for a variety of reasons, but that, that, you know, at that maximum number, there would be sufficient room. In, in a lot of ways, this, this, this layout is very similar to the layout at First Parish Church.
Okay, so do you understand my point that there needs to be at least fourteen or fifteen vendors, farmers and or bakery establishments?
There have to be at least fourteen?
Well, eighty percent of eighteen.
So.
Fourteen. Now, if you end up with only sixteen vendors, it would be eighty percent of that would have to be food or bakery establishments. But that is the way we've interpreted predominantly before. I just wanna make sure that we don't end up with
To be quite honest.
Jeff, wait a minute. I don't wanna make, have a farmer's market with two farmers, one bakery, and everything else is artists and musicians and nonprofits. That's not the idea here.
That will not happen.
Well, that's, I wanna make sure of it. And I want it, I want provisions in the decision to make it clear that eighty percent, which I mean, I take to mean predominantly, which is the way we've defined it before, have to be farmers selling, displaying and selling, and or bakery selling and or displaying. And the rest can be nonprofits, artists and musicians, but not more than that.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
When we say baker or produce vendor, we also include in that, or in my mind, I include in that some other vendors who might be, for instance, relish or pickles or other kind of food goods. Is that also the way you're thinking of it?
Maybe. Lisa, have you?
Baked goods.
Lisa, have you read the, the definition of farmer's market in our zoning bylaw?
Not recently.
Okay, so that's what you need to look at. So I, I'll, you know, I'll read it to you.
Thanks.
Farmers display and sell, one, items that have been produced on farms they operate, or, two, items that have been produced on other farms through a farmer agent relationship. Parentheses, such items to include food, flowers, plants, firewood, preserves, baked goods, soaps, wool products and similar items, closed parentheses. And then bakery establishments can, to display and sell their baked goods, such sales, whatever. But th- those are the items that we're talking about. And it's all on page four of our zoning bylaw.
Very good, thank you.
I think in, in applying that, Marty, we would include, we have vendors that sell seafood, we have vendors who sell meat. We have always, and the board has always accepted that as part of the vendors. They're selling food, fresh and local. That's what the farmer's market is all about. That's what we, in testimony, ten years ago, listen, listen, Marty, eleven years ago, when we had a hearing, oh, Jean, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to bring in the fact that this isn't the first time we've been asked for a special permit for this use. And we addressed the concerns that Marty has in our prior special permits. As I recall, this isn't the first time this has come up about it's to be predominantly food and food vendors. And we addressed that, I believe. So if we, we didn't, we didn't have in our packets the special permit that was used to operate at Garrity Way. But if we simply copy the language from that special permit, won't that address your, your issue, Marty, or Lee? Do you recall that addressing the issue of predominantly food?
I think we call, I had to go back and look at the language in the, in the other decisions, but I know this issue came up before, and we talked about the number of vendors and how many of them had to be farm, farm related, and how many artists were allowed. And we had language, I think, in the earlier decisions. I don't remember the exact language. But certainly in this decision, I could, we, we, we could and would pull that language out and continue it in any decision we issued at this location.
I, I would only
I thought.
The only thing I would say, and, and this is directed to Jeff, I've never objected to meat or fish, so that's not an issue. But even though they're not specifically set forth in that definition. But I, I've told you what my concern is, which is that, you know, my, my understanding of farmer's market is that it is clearly not supposed to end up with a couple of food vendors and everything else is, you know, everything else. But you said that won't happen, and I believe you, it has, never has happened, as far as I could tell, and shouldn't start now. I have one other question. I think we should have, and I know we had this in the earlier years, I know we had a sketch plan showing us where all these tables were gonna be. And when you lay it out, and I thought Lisa said that, you know, she had given a plan or somebody had given a plan to the electrician. But if not, okay. But I, I think we should have a plan about where these tables and tents are gonna go.
If I may answer that, Marty?
Sure.
Okay, so another, every other location, well, other than First Parish, I mean, as far as the parking lot location and Garrity's Way, you know, there were marked parking spaces, you know, in white asphalt. So it was easy to, to indicate on a plan where they would be. And just to give you some, some of the complications here, because I actually walked this out. I wish it was simple. But, you know, on those two walkways, particularly on the long one, there are benches, they're made out of heavy metal. I, you know, I tried lifting them. I couldn't do it. I don't think they're even meant, intended to be lifted, but they're made out of wrought iron.
Yeah, I sit on them all the time.
So it's not, it's difficult to determine, you know, the location of the tents. And the best, at this point in time, that we've determined, it's gonna actually be something that won't occur probably until, you know, very close to the opening of the market, because it's really very, very honestly, very difficult to, to figure out, you know, where they're exactly gonna be because of the problem I just mentioned. It's, you know, it's, it's sod, it's, you have these benches, you know, three or four, it's, they're, you know, which may, and there's a, I think there's also a bike rack to determine, you know, where, where the tents are gonna be. It's until, until very close to the market opening. And if, and, and to be quite honest, to be, it, it, I don't wanna give this, the board something that we can't live with in terms of the location of the tents. Because it, it, it's, it's possible that, or not possible, it's probable that some of that area i- is gonna be difficult to locate the tents. And how, where are we gonna do? You know, we're talking about a maximum number of vendors, but you, you know, I think that's probably, well, you know, right now, we're starting the whole process of looking for vendors, which is a process in itself for the farmer's market, you know, because we have to come to an agreement with them and et cetera, et cetera. So we don't know exactly how many vendors we're gonna have until maybe, I don't know, before the market opens, of course. So, I, it's, 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 I understand what you're saying about, you know, if it was a situation where, well, this is, is only intended for one year, of course, at Greensfield. So, but in the past, you know, you know, based on experience, you know, it might be impossible to do a layout, a vendor layout on the, the, the site. But I, I don't know. And another issue also is dealing with the electrician, Sean Rego. You know, I did talk to, I did, you know, did a layout with him, or I gave it to Barry DuLong, and he gave it to Sean Rego as to where the outlets would be. So, you know, I was looking for more outlets, of course. So that's another limiting factor in terms of exactly where the tents are gonna be and which vendors are gonna be at, you know, near which outlets or would be the outlets. It's, it's kinda like, it is new ground, it's a new area, and it's not like a parking lot where you have, you know, marked spaces. Do you see, understand what I'm saying?
Well, I, I do, but as the planning board, I think we need to have a plan that says where these things are gonna go. And as initially, I'm understanding they're only gonna go in the pink areas on your plan. They're not gonna go anywhere else.
That's correct.
So I look at it, and I, I haven't stepped it off the way you have, but I find it hard to believe you're gonna fit eighteen tables under tents in that area. But I could definitely be wrong. Wouldn't be the first. All right, I have one other question. You're showing a pink area on Great Plain Avenue. What's that?
Okay, so the situation there is we have a meat vendor. And, which is Chestnut Farm. So Chestnut Farm operates there. That's, yeah, I see what you're saying about, that was intentional. So, and I had talked to Sean Rego about that too. So the question was, where was Chestnut Farm gonna go? Because they, they sell from their truck. And they have these two cases that are, you know, refrigerated to keep the, the meat cold. This has all been worked out with the health department, of course. So, and just to make things a little more complicated, this vendor comes in from Central Mass. I can't remember, some small town in Central Mass, North Central Mass, and
Harwick.
Harwick, yeah. And so, very nice people. And so, and they've been with us for about a couple of years, but the end of last season, because of the pandemic, and you, you know, they weren't able to staff that truck. So it was uncertain as to whether or not they were gonna be coming back this year. It was dependent upon staffing the truck. And it was a long haul for them to come in from Harwick, you can imagine. And then you have to go back, Central Mass, maybe two hours, I don't know what it is, hour and a half. You know, off the interstates for certain. So if they did come back, they would, they would, they would be located on Great Plain Avenue. There's a parking space right there. You, you, near, it's near the YMCA. It's where that, that, that yellow, that pink is. And there's a, a lamppost there, and I talked to Sean Rego, I said, well, how would you get, how would you get an outlet in that lamppost? Although they did do it on the parking lot next to Newton Bank. But he said, he assured me that there was one there already. You know, maybe it's inside somehow, but he, you know, he's a can do guy. I, I don't know if you've ever met Sean Rego.
No, but Jeff, are, are you aware that that spot that you're talking about is precisely where the town built a parklet last year?
I know, I understand that.
Is the town intending to do that again?
Well, that is an issue which I think that what we were thinking, if Chestnut Farm was gonna be coming back, before we could do anything, you know, we would have to discuss it with the town. And we were gonna do that anyways.
But there is one other opportunity with Chestnut, as they have a truck with freezers on it. The Y had also said that they could park. They have a place where they put a van, and they said that it's not a, a public parking spot, but it's right next to where there's the word YMCA, I think, in the, in the parking lot, next to a little shrub kind of flowery circle. And that's right where the Y van parks and Paula said that that meat vendor could also park there if they need to for access. Because it's not a truck that can, we don't want it to, and they don't want to drive onto the field, but they need to vend out of their truck. So that would be a backup in case that parklet remains there. And, and that would mean that our little pink area would also be a tiny bit of the YMCA parking that is not public today, so we would not be removing a spot from a, from YMCA client.
So then, if they were to use the YMCA parking lot to vend, then to extend the pink area on the ballpark side of the sidewalk toward the YMCA so that you could get to it, and you'd have to delete the pink on Great Plain Avenue, right?
Correct. That would be an alternate, yes.
Well, I think somewhere, we need to make that clear, if that's what might happen. Particularly if that spot on Great Plain Avenue is gonna be a parklet that the town is gonna build, and you're not gonna have access to it.
There's no question that this would have to go through the town.
Well, it, it's gotta go through us too, though, Jeff, and we're here.
I understand that.
So.
If I may, if I may, it raises the question in my mind that I just, maybe I assumed and I shouldn't have assumed. Jeff, has this, has this plan been approved by the town as part of signing of the license agreement?
The plan, the pink?
Yes.
The pink is an exhibit to the license agreement.
It is.
Yes.
So, so the pink that includes the pink in on Great Plain Avenue, we were talking about the parklet, Marty, has been, what Jeff is saying, has been approved by the town for use by the farmer's market. Because it's an attachment to the license agreement.
So, but
The license to use that area.
Did you, well, did you discuss with the town whether they're gonna put a park, parklet in there? Maybe they wanna change this? I mean, I don't know what the town's plans are here. But, you know, the way
We did, okay, so, I, I can't remember exactly, you know, I had talked to just can't think of his name offhand. The person who replaced
Amy?
Just worked for the Kate Fitzpatrick.
Miles.
Miles, thank you. So I I had dealt with him. Talked to him about, you know, the whole process. And I think I mentioned the possibility, but I said, you know, the issue really was, the the town would have to approve it specifically because it's a parking area. But, you know, and the other question is signing up the vendor, and whether they're coming back. And I don't know, and we we Lisa sent out the applications, we haven't heard back from them. If they're positive, we can't do anything un- until, and the town specifically approves it. I don't personally think that, I think that I might have mentioned, you know, the parkly issue to somebody. But I don't think that we could do anything unless we have express permission.
Okay, well, the last thing that feeds into this, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of it, is you were talking about having your vendors drive up close, unload, and then park. And so, I I see you only having two or three spaces to drive up on Great Plain Ave, and two or three maybe on Pickering to get close. But maybe that's enough, if you're only gonna have, you know, less than eighteen vendors to be able to have four or five unloading at a time over three-hour period, maybe that's, maybe that works fine. But what if the spaces are taken? Did the, did the spaces get blocked off? For you?
What happens now, what happens is people unload, they they ta- they put their car next to the market, they unload their things, and then they move their car, and then they go set up. So the unloading process is relatively quick. And that has not been an issue today, although at Garrity Way, we only have two sides of Garrity's Way to unload. Here we have a little bit more space. So if we haven't had an issue at Garrity Way, I would not expect with the greater amount of street frontage that we have here for it to be any more of an issue now here at the Y.
But Lisa, what if, what if you were the two or three spaces on Great Plain Avenue between the pink area and the corner are taken? What if people park there?
Okay, I can answer that question.
Okay.
So thi- this is what we did at Garrity Way, and I believe that we did do this also at First Parish, although that goes back several years. So we put out, and this was with agreement with the town, with the police department, is that we would, we put out red cones in two spaces. And that was Garrity Way. So on Garrity Way, we had, the agreement was at both ends of Garrity Way, one at Chapel Street and the other at Great Plain Avenue, I'm not Great Plain Avenue, but Highland. And then we would, we put out cones so that nobody would be parking there, and there's somebody would come, you, market manager would arrive early enough that so that, you know, tho- that space would be taken up. So in other words, it wouldn't be a truck beforehand. And the same problem, there was this issue, too, in terms of Garrity Way, you know, with cars parking there before we got to Garrity's Way. So we would put up caution tape early on Garrity Way to block off to prevent, you know, cars, vehicles getting out to Garrity Way.
So on this, along Great Plain Avenue, who's, who is giving you authority to put out cones to to reserve these spaces?
Well, it would be the same as before, which is that we would work at the town manager's office and the police department.
Have you discussed it with them?
Have I discussed it with them? Not that specific issue, but I did discuss the issue of unloading from those three locations that you mentioned. If you look at the the map, I see it on the screen here, thank you. That, you know, the three locations are, you know, Pickering. I I I look at that as being one, one location. And the other two locations would be on Great Plain Avenue, one at at the intersection of Pickering and Great Plain Avenue. That would be one location, I call it Great Plain Avenue, and the other would be and that's parking space that's close to YMCA, where you see the pink.
Yeah. Well, okay, all right, I I think I probably have said enough, but I'm a lot more concerned about this than you are, obviously. But.
Well, it's worked out, Marty, before with the town and with the police.
Well, you've never done it at this location. But so I think it needs more planning, myself. And I think you need to talk to people about what's available on Great Plain Avenue, and can you block off those spaces with cones? And along maybe Pickering, and if you can, if they say, okay, you know, I think you're gonna be okay. But if you can't, it could, it could get a little ugly, actually, but.
I'll tell you why, Marty, I'm very confident it will be happened. Because the farmer's market has great support from the town manager's office, and back from, in fact, from everybody in Town Hall. And the same thing is true with the police. So y- you know, I mean, they're obviously concerned about safety, and they're concerned about spaces that might be used, you know, for businesses and all that. But th- they've been, you know, we've always been able to work out issues like that with them to their satisfaction. And they're mo- more than willing because they, they realize the importance of the farmer's market to many people in this town, like yourself, who go to the market and wanna see it as success.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying to you, Jeff, is I think you need to have those discussions with the powers that be sooner rather than later.
I, it's, it's, I'm going to do that promptly, as you suggest, and I think it's, I agree with you. You know. So.
And I, and I, while you're at it, you know, ask them to confirm that they acknowledge that they're giving up that parklings, park, parklet space where the the pink area on Great Plain Avenue is. I understand, if that's an exhibit to the license, it seems to me like they've already given it up. But, you know, it could be that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and I just wanna make sure that they're aware that they've given up the parklet space by virtue of this.
No, I appreciate, I thank you for bringing it to my attention. And, you know, I will directly, you know, s- speak to the town about it so that we work out the details.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a good, I'm glad that you brought us to my attention, Marty, really.
Okay.
Marty, are you suggesting that we need to have this handled before we issue a special permit?
I'd be more comfortable if we had those details ironed out, and, you know, I think everybody would be, feel more comfortable if we really knew the details of what's going on there. And it doesn't, I don't think it'll require Jeff to to spend a ton of time, you know, a couple of phone calls probably, and a and a little sketch plan about where these tables and tents are gonna go, and I'll probably be happy.
But I can tell you right now, that's, it's not gonna be possible to sketch out where those tables are gonna be, because it's, it's not possible until, being realistic about it, Marty, until until we have more information about where the, the, the electrical outlets are gonna be. And and how many vendors we have. So it's, it's, it's speculation, and it's, it's.
Marty, I, I think that in terms of laying out where the tents are gonna be and where the vendors are gonna be, because I think you raise a good point by prior practice. And I'm gonna interrupt myself here and ask Jeff, in the prior years when we've had those plans with the vendors' tents and tables on the plan, were those approved by the town before you came to the planning board? So that they were part of the license agreement with the town, and our special permit was approving a plan that was approved by the town. Be that as it may. I think we should have a condition that the plan with the layout of the tables and tents as approved by the town with its, like, as part of the license agreement, be filed with the planning board by May thirty-one. I don't know if May thirty-one is, that may be Memorial Day. But, you know, the, the business day, the business, the last business day, just, just before June first.
So I wanna, I wanna raise this.
Satisfy you, Marty?
I'm sorry?
Your concern about our having an opportunity to to see where the tents are going to be, and to have that as part of the record, to, to have it as a condition that it be filed with the planning board?
Is there, is there a meeting of the planning board between the end of May and June twelfth?
We usually meet on the first Tuesday of the month, even, even in June. So I think so.
As long as it's an opportunity to say this works, or, you know, something's a little bit rough. I'm not gonna be, Jeff, you're never gonna have to deal with me again, don't worry.
No, no, I wanna, no, but it's, it's a good issue, and I I wanted to address it. And I, but, and I wanna be forthright and and not engage in any kind of BS from my end, in terms of what I can promise. But because of, it's first time, we're dealing with turf, we're dealing with benches, we're dealing with electoral outlets, that it's, we were supposed to open on June twelfth. I mean, it's, it's quite conceivable, and I'm not making this up, that we're not gonna be able to know details like this until very, you know, that last week, if not the, 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 the day of, the first day of, of when we opened. When, what we've done in the past is sometimes, you know, we ask the vendors to come early so we can do more with the layout. It's, 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 it's feasibility, you know, with you're not talking about a parking lot, you're not talking about Garrity Way, you're talking about, you know, grass and benches and, and all kinds of obstacles and, and a bicycle rack, and how many vendors are we gonna be able to get? Sometimes a lot of the vendors sign up at the very end. So, you know, you're, 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 it's, it's a feasibility, and I, I mean that seriously. We don't determine, a lot of that can't be determined to the la- in the very end, it's the first time that we're gonna be using this area.
Jeff, I do think that we could create a plan with the you, you know, with what we know now, with the two big produce vendors, and then looking at the likely vendors based on our history, because we have a pretty good idea, and I, and I think I understand what the planning board's looking for, so I do think we can sketch that out. We could, we could meet there together and, you know, plan it out.
But, but Lisa, what, what about this situation, though? So the market opens, we put out, we give a plan to the planning board, a plan, a vendor plan. Then, and then we, we realize we, on, you know, day one, June twelfth, that's not gonna work out for one reason or the other, and we have to rearrange the vendors. And then, well, you know, we're kind of locked into a plan, you know, before we, before we actually open the market. It's the, it's, we've never done this before at that location, it's, it's not I mean, it's not rocket science, but it, you know, there are a lot of practical elements to be worked out.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Jeff, with all due respect, okay, you've got April and May, two full months of what should be good weather. Yes, we can have a snowstorm at the beginning of April, but you're gonna have two full months prior, two and a half months prior to your opening to have a clear field, to be able to work, work around this, and see what you can do. And, and if you have to make changes at the beginning of June, or even after June twelfth, people come back to us to have an amendment to their special permits all the time. And very often, for something like this, we do it by way of what's called a de minimis change. If all that we're doing is, is, is moving some, some tents around within the pink area as to where they're gonna be, that seems to me to be a de minimis change. If you come to us, you know, in the second week of June, the third week of June, and say, you know, here's the final plan, we need, we need to attach this to our special permit, that's fine. We do that all the time.
Just, just Paul, I, I just, clarification for me. What is the purpose of the plan in this particular case? What, what is the goal?
Well, in almost every permit or site plan review that we issue, we call for a plan to show where things are gonna go. Because we wanna know. We wanna, we wanna control where things are gonna go. And if you say to me, well, we, we won't know till we put them up, that's really totally different than what we do.
But this is like apples and oranges, Marty, because
Why is that?
You can do that with a building. For example, it's easy to do with a building, but with the farmer's market.
We do it with bike racks, Jeff. We do it with all sorts of things. You know, it, it's our normal practice.
I, I, I can tell you, well, well, I don't know if this will be acceptable to you, but we'll do our best to give a projection of where the, everything's got, where things will be, such as what Lisa mentioned, like the, the produce vendors. But, you know, I think it's unfair to us to lock us into a plan that's not feasible.
Excuse me, we're giving you until the end of May to come up with a plan. And if that plan doesn't work, you can come back and amend the plan. I don't know what your objection is with this. This is not a difficult process. This is not something that we're asking you to do in the middle of winter when there's snow on the ground.
We'll do our best.
No, we're gonna have a condition that says that you will file the plan by the end of May. If you need to change it after that, you come to us and you ask, and you say, we needed to change the plan, here's the new plan. And you file it. You follow the procedures. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna agree to just say, we want you to do your best to do this. No, I don't operate that way. I don't operate my law practice that way.
Oh. We'll do it the way you want to do it.
Thank you. Gene.
Yes, one thing I wanna see on the plan. On the third page of the January twenty-first letter that addresses the various site plan review and special permit issues, there's a mention of the total area. So we're issuing a special permit with regard to a particular parcel of land. But the plan, the sketch plan does not show that parcel of land that has an area of eight thousand six hundred and eighty square feet. There's no line drawn on Greensfield as to what is the area we're issuing the special permit for.
So what I had done, because of, you know, there are parking requirements. You know, I went to DPW, and I talked to, uh, uh, his first name is Tom, I can't think of it, very nice guy, and very helpful. In fact, everybody at DPW was most helpful in terms of the layout, et cetera. And I, you know, I mentioned to him, I showed him, you know, the pink area, et cetera, and in terms of complying with the parking requirement, he has software that can make a a determination of number of square feet. In fact, Lee was a person who originally pointed me to this, to the, that DP, DPW could do this. And so that's on the basis of what you see in the pink is what the basis of that calculation was made with the software at DPW.
Eight thousand six hundred square feet does not include the triangles along the Great Plain Avenue sidewalk with the bushes, or it doesn't include the triangle along Pickering Street with the bushes.
Or the walkway. Or the walkway.
I assume the eight thousand six hundred includes a walkway.
Pink, though. It's, but it's not in pink. So that's the problem. What are we?
There's a line drawn. I don't care if it's eight thousand six hundred square feet or twelve thousand square feet. But where is the line on, on this plan, or this, or another one you're gonna present to us that shows the area that we're giving the special permit for? I just wanna see that line. And I wanna know what the area of that, what the area is that we're licensing.
So, for the purposes of the license agreement, it was the area in pink. Because that's where the vendors are going to be.
Not including this, but the, but the sidewalk is part of it, no?
No, the sidewalk is where people walk, they can't put vendors in the middle of the sidewalk.
We're not, we're not allowed, vendors will not be on the sidewalk.
Mister Chair, I move to continue, I move to continue this hearing, it's almost nine o'clock. We have, we have several other large items on our agenda to continue with, and clearly this application. With all due respect, Jeff, needs some refinement. And I think that we can, uh, you know. Bring this up again, and we can be available offline, certainly through Lee's office to help give a little bit more guidance. On the specifics of what we're looking for. Uh, and yet. I don't think we're, we have the capacity tonight, given our agenda. And the ti- and the hour to uh. To hash out all of the details at this hour, so Mister Chair, I move to continue.
Wait a second.
A second. Um, I would recommend that it be then continued um to our next meeting on um March the fifteenth. We have two hearings on that night, one at seven twenty, one at seven forty. Um, I would suggest probably eight o'clock.
What, what are the two hearings on that night?
We have um, where we're dealing with the uh Needham Gateway property, um, so we have a hearing on the dumpster relocation at seven twenty. Um, we have, um, and then we have an application from Carbon Health at seven forty. Um, and the application from uh Ex Golf was withdrawn, so just just those two.
All right, um. Jeff. As our legal practice, Lee is recommending that we schedule this for eight o'clock. And I'm gonna go on the, I'm gonna stick my neck out here and tell you. That given what she just told us, what the two hearings are with regard to Needham Gateway. Um. If I were a betting person, and I'm not, because I usually lose bets, so I've learned not to bet real money. But if I were a betting person, I would bet that you're not going to be heard at eight o'clock. Uh, please be prepared to be here at eight o'clock, but please be prepared to to understand that it's. Um. It might be eight fifteen or eight thirty or even later before we actually. Get to you, because I have a feeling that Carbon Health is gonna go, certainly Carbon Health is gonna go a lot longer than twenty minutes.
So, and I just want to reassure both Marty and Paul and 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 Gene. And Adam, that as far as what we've discussed. You know, for a better layout. You know, that, you know, we will do one. We can make one for. Be part of the special permit or or the language to for that before the opening that we will give you. And then after the, if we have to change it. You know, after the market opens, then we'll give you another one after that. You know, for your examination, to maybe be made part of the record, I guess.
Well, it'd be for our approval, Jeff.
No, no, for your approval.
Right.
Yeah, but that's why, that's why we need it. Um, the month and a half. Before. Um.
You open.
Before you open, because we only have meetings twice a month, on the first and third. Tuesdays of the month. And 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 so for the twelfth, um, we have to have it before our our first. Our first meeting. At the beginning of June. For that to be presented, because we have to comply with the open meeting laws. To have that, you know, in front of us that that we have it to approve it.
Right.
So, you know, and 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 again. I do want to stress, but work, if it turns out that it doesn't work, we're gonna work with you to do, you know, a a quick amendment. To it. To finalize it after you open, but.
You have a motion on the floor, Mister Chair.
I don't, I don't want to sound, I don't want to, I don't want to sound, I hope I didn't sound negative, I guess.
Guys, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the floor, it's nine o'clock, we have three other items on our agenda, or two other, three other items on our agenda, that's gonna take a substantial amount of time. The motion is on the floor, we have a second.
The motion include the time at the.
Yes, eight o'clock.
All right, I seconded it.
Eight o'clock.
I think I did second it tonight, but I seconded.
Okay. Adam Block.
Hi.
Gene McKnight.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye, we'll continue to March fifteenth. At eight o'clock. Lee, please ask Natasha to. Watch the tape.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
I didn't even get a chance to read. The communications, but I'll hold on to them and read them into the record. Had to continue.
Of course, persons who might have come tonight hoping to say something or ask a question, I hope that they'll be able to join us on March fifteenth. Uh, any attendees.
See, I see that we had a hand up from a Larry Cohen. And that was probably, yeah, that was during the course of the public hearing, but we've now continued it, so.
Yeah. Larry, Colin, I hope you can. Come on March fifteenth to raise your question, you can certainly send us. An email. Or a letter. Email is probably better to communicate with us.
And Lee, you want to?
What concerns?
Lee, do you want to just confirm what the email address is?
Uh, the email address for.
For Larry or any members of the public to email you for, to email the board for comments on this and any other matter.
Um, they could email me at alannewman@needhamma.gov.
Thank you. Newman is N E W M A N. Mister Chairman, could I ask for a very brief uh adjournment while I just use the men's room here?
Sure, let's take a five minute adjournment.
Thank you.
All right, we all seem to be back. Next item on our agenda. Is a public hearing originally scheduled for seven thirty. An amendment to major project site plan special permit number ninety three dash three Wingate Development LLC. Is a petitioner for property located at five eighty nine Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. Regarding the conversion of the existing one hundred and forty two bed skilled nursing facility. To fifty independent living units. The panelists. Um, that we have scheduled are um. Attorney Evans Huber, the attorney for the for the applicant. And representatives of the applicant are David Feldman, Scott Cameron, Kirsten Brown, Ron. Brown, Bron, Bron, thank you, and Andrew Stebbins. Um. Before we begin, may I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the public notice?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? I'll call for a vote. I'll wait for Adam Block to come back.
I'm here.
Gene McKnight.
Yes, um, hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Marty Jacobs. And. The chair votes aye. Marty, you're muted, but. I saw you and.
Sorry about that, hi.
Yeah, thank you. So um, we've been, we have dispensed with it and um. Evans, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, members of the board. Um, as Paul mentioned, um. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Wingate Development LLC. Uh, and we are asking for an amendment to the existing special permit that relates to the property. At the corner of Gould Street and Highland Avenue, where there is currently a skilled nursing facility. Uh, located on approximately two point five acre parcel. Um, the. Only relief that we are asking for tonight is um an amendment of the special permit to allow a change of use. To independent living from the current skilled nursing facility, that's a use that is allowed by special permit in the Elder Services District. Uh, we are not seeking any other zoning relief, uh, the property complies with all dimensional. Um, and parking design requirements as well as the amount of parking required by the bylaw. And parking design requirements as well as the amount of parking required by the bylaw. We are also going to be asking for a board's approval of the change of ownership. This was an oversight on our part. The original special permit issued back in ninety-three was issued to a different owner. And that contained a condition that the ownership cannot be changed without the approval of the planning board. The, the current owner, which is Wingate at Needham Inc. Acquired the property in twenty sixteen and it was simply through inadvertence that they did not come to the board. Prior to now to seek that approval for the change of ownership. So. We're here before the board seeking the amendment to the special permit to allow this use. Which is allowed by special permit in the elder services district as well as the approval of the change of ownership. Paul mentioned the various members of the team that we have here to present to you. We have David Feldman, who is the vice president of real estate. At Wingate. We have our architect Andrew Stebbins from the architectural team that I know you guys are familiar with. We have Kirsten Brown, who is our traffic engineer, and we have Scott Cameron, who is our civil engineer. So with that, I'm gonna turn the. Our presentation over to David Feldman.
Thanks, Evan. So how did, how did we get here? You know, there's, there's been a lot of. News media about. You know, what's been going on and, and you know, nursing industry in particular and some of the staffing issues. So on, on February fourth in twenty twenty-two. Wingate notified the Department of Public Health of our intent to close Wingate at Needham, and we have filed the required closure plan. Clearly, we didn't take this.
May I interrupt? You, you said the Department of Public Health. You're talking about the Commonwealth or the town?
Massa- Massachusetts Department of Public Health. That's correct. Sorry about that. After taking care of residents at that location for over twenty-five years, we did not take this decision lightly. But honestly, we, we felt in the current environment, we can no longer provide. The level of care that we demanded of ourselves and our residents and families quite honestly expected. We are working with residents, families and staff to make sure all residents are placed in the best situations possible for them. This process is, has started and is moving along smoothly. The nursing home industry is not in a good place right now with extreme staffing shortage in all areas, not only clinical care with nurses and CNAs. But in supportive roles like activities and housekeeping and dietary. We're, we're participating in a program with the Commonwealth right now where we have National Guard members actually supporting. Our, our clinical care team in non-clinical roles. There's a continuing erosion of occupancy across the state and Norfolk County, and it's not exclusive. According to CMS occupancy data as of February thirteenth, there were over eight thousand four hundred open beds across the state. Almost eleven hundred open beds in Norfolk County alone. In, in the past, there was always a healthy competition between providers based on environmental care and clinical outcomes. Today, with these staffing challenges, you can include competition for staff as well as the other areas that I mentioned. And the ability of home care companies to provide the same services. In a residence home, you can see why occupancy is and will continue to deteriorate. We're not the first nursing home to close in the Commonwealth, and we certainly won't be the last. Home care companies can provide skilled nursing, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. As well as social worker services and build Medicaid and Medicare directly. The same services you would get at Wingate at Needham or other skilled nursing facilities. Including home health aids similar to a certified nursing assistant, but in the comfort of your home. Home care is clearly the preferred option over skilled, over skilled care environment. Which is why it is growing at an eleven percent clip. It's not for all discharges from the hospitals, but certainly for a large majority. I don't think anyone would argue that recuperating at home is a much better, more desirable option. Than in a congregate care or a skilled nursing facility. So our proposal. We looked at a couple of different senior housing options. And we're trying to find the, the right mix where the local market was underserved and when we feel the independent living was the right adaptive reuse of the facility. We are proposing to create fifty independent living apartments made up of large studios, one bedroom and two bedroom apartments. With full kitchens and laundry. Andrew will go over the, the plans in a few minutes. We've come up with a program that only provides a social environment for the active adult, but a more economical solution versus your traditional independent living. We'll provide amenity spaces such as fitness area, game room with golf simulator, chef's kitchen. A library, club room, theater, some outdoor spaces and existing patio and roof deck. Will provide a, a full-time concierge, life enrichment coordinator. That will help organize social events and the desires of the resident community. The difference here is you will have all the amenity spaces and a basic package of activities. Where you will be offered other activities à la carte or pay as you go. This will allow us to keep the cost down versus traditional independent living. And that's kind of what, what we're, what we're proposing for, for the adaptive reuse of, of the building. I'll turn it back to Evans.
Okay, so I'd like Andrew's, Mr. Stebbins, Andrew Stebbins from T A T. To perhaps do some screen sharing and walk the board through. The current layout compared to what is proposed for the layout of the new units.
Good thing, Evan. Thank you. Andrew Stebbins, for the record, associate the architectural team. Said to be back in Needham again. Said to be working with David and the Wingate team again as well. Let me share my screen. So here's the, the, the site aerial. Let's share my screen here. So this is the, the site. Clip this from the, from the formal submission. Prepared some exhibits, perhaps maybe a little easier to read. So this is the existing building, existing main entry Gould Street and Highland Ave. And I'll show you the existing plans. Basically, Gould Street will be on the bottom. This will be rotated down. So the building is two stories above grade with basement. As you can see, this is actually a demo plan, so the dash walls, the walls that would be proposed to be removed. You can see. The. This is actually a, a great candidate for an active reuse. The building is. Designed to. In the I two standards, non-combustible construction. This, this particular building has a block and plank structural system. So the, the bearing walls remain. And then the. Between the two bearing walls of the plank span, two planks, the plank span. And what's formerly two, two rooms is generally be going to become one unit, the living room, bedroom. As David mentioned, there's a mixture of studios, ones and twos. So this is the upper floor plan. There are some outdoor spaces. There's an outdoor patio. This is the first floor. Again, the outdoor patio is accessed here. Then on the upper level, there's a roof terrace. Proposed. Start with the first floor, actually. So proposed with lining the. Lining the exterior wall with, with the proposed units. See, there's twenty-five units on the ground floor. We do have some common areas. The main entry will remain over. Over here along the circular drop-off. Enter the building. Have a concierge sort of leasing office, coffee counter, and greet, greet folks as they come in. And then we have the elevator lobby and mail lounge, business center, your card room, some residence storage and an access point here to the terrace. Next floor up, very similar condition. Units lining the exterior wall. We have a theater, chef's kitchen and club room. This is two spaces that'll be. Sort of connected and available to be, be sort of saved off if somebody had a private party. And then you have over here the roof terrace, which we outfitted. And then on the basement level, sorry, let me go back down. Basement level, we have the elevator, elevators here, and then we have some program space, a fitness yoga studio down here. And then the. Potentially a golf simulator and a pet washroom over in this spot here. So here's a couple of typical one-bedroom units. As David had mentioned, we have full kitchens. You know, the left here is a U-shaped kitchen. Operating within the existing envelope, it does work very well for. Like I said, for this use, independent use. But there's obviously gonna be differing unit sizes. But that's really not a bad thing. They'll give the. The clientele a range of options for. Range of housing options within the same building. So if a small unit may have a galley. A smaller walk-in with a larger unit may have a, a larger walk-in and, and U-shaped. There are some units that are deeper. One bedroom and tucking a den towards the corridor and with a half bath. Then we also have some, two, smattering of two bedrooms as well. So you come in the unit. Have two bedrooms that have their own bathrooms. And then there are, I believe, there's four studios. There's two of them, pretty typical. The strip kitchen and a sleeping and, and living room area. So that's really. Really the, the jux, the, the, the proposal. As I said, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward, very little exterior work. Be cleaning, repairing the brick a bit. The building's in really good shape, so we'll have a few new openings. In the exterior wall to be executed. And we do expect we're going to install new, new windows and a new roof as well. And perhaps some new skylights with these, with these internal spaces to allow for some natural light on the upper floors. So that's pretty much the building. Back to you, Evans.
Okay, so once you leave that screen up, I'm just gonna ask Scott Cameron to discuss briefly the. Parking layout and zoning compliance.
Thank you, Evans. Scott Cameron, R E Cameron and Associates, we prepared the site plan for the special permit. And what we're showing is that the, essentially the, the project will make no changes to the site. This is the existing parking in place. And there, there are no changes to the footprint of the building. It's a little hard to see the zoning table here, but the zoning table. Shows that the proposed use under the elder services zone. Is compliant in all respects. We have adequate parking. Maneuvering aisles. The only thing we're going to add though is a bicycle rack in. The vicinity, the southwest area off this walkway next to this light pole. That's where we would put the bicycle rack. Otherwise, the, the site will remain unchanged. We have adequate parking for the fifty units that are proposed. Any questions?
No, the only thing I would add is that right now the parking. Is the parking requirement or the, the site meets the parking requirement for the skilled nursing facility, which has a much higher. Parking demand than the independent living. So the number of spaces. That are on site significantly exceeds the. The requirement of the bylaw and I, I think what Scott was referring to about the only thing we will do, what he. I think what he was saying was that the only respect in which the. Property does not currently comply with parking and bylaw design requirements is the absence of bike racks, but those will be installed. So. It doesn't currently comply with that, but it will. So. Other than that, I think the only other. Presentation that we wanted to make to you before any questions or concerns the board have. Is from Kirsten to talk about traffic generation.
Yeah, thanks, Evans, and thanks for having us tonight. Just again, Kirsten, Ron, associate with Ron Mueller Associates. So we did take a look at this change in use of the site and what we did was we performed a trip generation comparison letter. To look at what the site as a skilled nursing facility, what kind of traffic that generates, that we're expected to generate. And then we compared that to these independent living units. And what we actually found was that we can expect about two hundred and sixty fewer trips on a weekday daily aspect. And also seven to thirty-four fewer trips during peak hours. And those peak hours are really one hour between seven and nine AM, one hour between four and six PM, and those are on weekdays. And then we also looked at a Saturday midday peak hour, which is about one hour typically between eleven AM and two PM. So really on all aspects here, we're looking at a decrease in traffic. Which, which from, by changing from the skilled nursing facility to this use. Just to build on the parking requirements, we looked at, we also looked at parking demand in our traffic letter. And we looked at it in the aspect of I T E parking generation rates and what those are. They're nationally accepted rates. It's data collected from similar facilities all over the country. And what we found was that an independent living facility of this size would require about thirty-four parking spaces. So given what's provided on site, we will definitely be able to meet that demand. But really, the, the gist of it is, is that we're expecting a decrease in traffic on all fronts with this change in use. Parking should be fine. We're not really gonna see any adverse traffic impacts associated with this change in use.
So those are the major points that we wanted to bring to the board's attention. We know that there's a concern about the fact that this skilled nursing facility is gonna be closing. And certainly, you know, are, are prepared to answer any questions that the board has about that or the necessity for it. But so with that, I guess we. Conclude our presentation and, and ask the board for questions or comments or feedback.
Well, let me. Let me start by going through the. Correspondence that we've received. Before we get to opening up the questions from. From the board. Of course, we have the, the traffic study. And we have a. We have an email from Dennis Condon. Our fire chief, the fire department is okay with this change in usage with the assumption of adherence to all codes and regulations. Which will be addressed through the permitting process. And we have a. We have a letter from. From Thomas Ryder, the acting town engineer. Bottom line, we have no comment or objection to the proposed plan. Before I get to the. Department of Public Health, I thought I had seen. Something from the. Police chief, but I'm not putting my hands on it right away.
I, I believe, I believe the police department also said they had no comment.
That's my rec, that's my recollection that they had no comment, but I'm not putting my hands on the exact. Email, so I can't read it exactly, but we did receive that. So then we get to. This email that we got from Timothy McDonald. Um, the director of the Needham Department of Public Health Services. Health does not support the changes proposed and believes the planning board should not approve the request. There is a dearth of skilled nursing care in the Needham community. And the potential closure of a one hundred forty-bed skilled nursing facility will exacerbate an already challenging situation. Additionally, a non-insignificant portion of the residents at Wingate relocated. When Avery Manor, Avery Crossing closed less than five years ago. This change replaced an undue burden on the residents of Wingate. And on their families as they struggle to find placement for their loved ones in Needham. Or in surrounding communities. The closure of assisted living and skilled nursing facilities jeopardizes the ability of the town of Needham to be a place where its residents. Can safely grow old. So. I guess the first question I have on that is, can you? Give more detail, please, on. Where you are in the closure process. What you see as the timeline of the closure process? Is there any possibility of reversing that decision?
David, you're muted.
Okay, I guess that one's for me. Um, no, the 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 short answer is no, there's there's no potential of reversing that decision. Um, and it has as much to do with. Uh, the Commonwealth being overbetted, not underbetted. Uh, the fact that. Staffing is an, is a huge, huge issue. You know, COVID did not help this the situation at all. Uh, as a matter of fact, it exasperated the situation. We were hoping that. Coming out of the expiration of the additional unemployment payments, people would start to come back to work. Uh, we have not seen that. Um, we have raised rates numerous times. We are paying uh, agency to provide care, which is not ideal. Uh, we are paying overtime for our existing staff. It's just, it's it's staffing, 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 staffing. It's untenable, and quite honestly, it's it's really um. Not giving us the ability to provide good care. Uh, as far as the the transfer of of residents. The final decision on where to go rests entirely with the family. Uh, it's it's really a a four-step process, and I can run through the process real quickly. Uh, the first step is the initial notification. Uh, of closure. Uh, we notify each resident, designated family member or. Uh, legal representatives in writing and verbally. Uh, we notify notify each resident's primary care physician in writing and verbally. Uh, we go into the communication phase. Uh, we have weekly meetings with residents and families individually to discuss their individual situation. And the process. We have weekly group meetings via Zoom. Uh, again, thanks for COVID. Uh, for families, for updates on the closure process, timelines, relocation plans, or any other information pertinent. Uh, to the general closure. Then we get into the rese- reselection, the relocation selection phase. Uh, our social service teams meets with families to discuss choices. If a family has a home already selected, Wingate will work with that facility to make sure the transfer process is as smooth as possible. If a family does not have a location selected, social services will make a recommendation of two to three facilities. Within a twenty-five mile radius of Needham. And schedule tours for the families to tour the home and meet with the care team. If a family would like to relocate the resident outside the twenty-five mile radius, someplace closer to another family member. Uh, social services will provide two or three choices in that area. And schedule tours for the family of the. Uh, at that home and meet with their care team. Um, again, the final decision on where to go always rests with the family. Uh, on moving day. According to Massachusetts Department of Public Health, we're only allowed to move five residents a day. Um, but on moving day, social services will set up a day that is most convenient for resident and family to to make the physical move to their new home. Wingate will provide the boxes and system packaging, packing up for the residents' belongings, and will bring the belongings to the the new home. Wingate provides transportation for the residents to their new location. Wingate transfers the medical records and any medications with the residents, with the resident, uh, to their new facility. Wingate notifies the resident's primary care physician of the date of the move. Uh, and the location of, and their new location. Wingate notifies Social Security, Medicaid, and any other, any other longer-term care insurer of the new location. Completes all the required change of address forms and certifications. We understand that it's a, it's a big deal to move a resident. Uh, we try to make it as as seamless as possible. Um, on the, on a positive note. You know, closing, closing a nursing home is never, never an easy decision. But with the state of of the nursing home industry now, um, by consolidating beds and consolidating staff. We're actually helping the situation, not that that was our our intent. Uh, it's an unintended consequence, but it happens to be a positive consequence. Um, as far as. Some of the items in the letter, I I think if Mr. McDonald would would go to the CMS data, he would see. The number of open beds, particularly in in Norfolk County specifically. Um, there's been a a big push over the last five years for more affordable um. Care and the Department of Public Health and the secretary has really been pushing the the home care aspect. And it's it's growing in popularity. Uh, and I think it's going to continue to grow, and I think you're going to see fewer and fewer nursing homes in the Commonwealth. And you're going to see a more reduction in in beds. So I think that's that's what the data is telling us, that's what. Uh, the market's telling us, and that's what we've been seeing. COVID obviously accelerated everything. Um, but we have seen this coming for for quite a while.
David, you keep mentioning the number of beds in Norfolk County. But um. Needham is really just at one end of Norfolk County. We're we're. We're we're more affiliated with surrounding towns that are. That are also in Middlesex County, and you know, it it's, can you, can can? Can you speak to the, to the census issues in the? Needham, Newton, Wellesley, Weston, you know, this. This particular area because Needham residents. Needham residents are not going to be looking to go to a nursing home in Franklin or in Norfolk. Um, you know, they're going to be looking to to be in this area.
Yeah, so that 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 falls under the eight thousand, almost eighty-one hundred beds that are that are open across the Commonwealth. The majority of the facilities are in Eastern Mass. Um, there's a large concentration within, um, like you said, Needham, Wellesley, Newton. In that area. Uh, specific towns, I don't have the data for specific towns. But we know, um, even in the Newton area, there's there's facilities that are closing. Not sure about Wellesley, uh, Weston, uh, facilities have closed. So it's not, it's not exclusive to the to the needle market, it's in the surrounding communities. Um, and you're going to see more and more nursing homes, uh, closing in in the near future. I I know there's, there's gotta be. A handful of nursing homes on a watch list right now because of because of staffing issues. DPH is going to be cracking down on on staffing issues. Uh, CMS is going to be coming out with a new rule probably within the next year. Uh, mandating minimum staffing levels, and in this staffing environment. Facilities are not going to be able to meet those those requirements. So. I don't know what the answer is. I know that um. We cannot provide the level of care that we've always provided in this environment, and we don't want to be. Uh, the one that's going to put our our residents at risk.
I'm going to. Ask the other members of the board. If they have questions, so. Adam, you raised your hand first, go right ahead.
I have a couple of questions, um. One of the questions that I had was, you had mentioned that you provide a smooth transition. Process uh, to your existing um. Occupants, and then I was going to ask what that was, but you laid out pretty clearly your four-step process. And. Although this is an extraordinarily difficult transition for people, especially at this stage in their lives. It does sound like a pretty comprehensive. Uh, process. And I was glad to hear of the extensive. Uh, uh, care that you provide to help that transitional process. How um. How many? Beds are vacant in your facility right now for skilled nursing?
So before we filed the uh, the closure plan, we were operating at about sixty-nine and a half percent. So we were running about ninety-eight beds at a possible one forty-two. Uh, we started the the uh, the transfer process, we're down to sixty-six occupied residents. Uh, sixty-six occupied beds.
And when do you expect to complete the uh, transition?
Typically, uh, we we expect a sixty to ninety-day process. Um, this happens to be going a little bit quicker because of the the number of open beds in the system. And I. I think it's important to mention that there's actually, uh. Some residents are actually going home with the ability to have home care and provide care at home. Uh, so it's not that everybody's going to a different facility. Uh, in the congregant care skilled nursing setting, but some residents are actually able to go home. Uh, and get the, and get to care.
And were you saying that part of the, that one of the drivers? For that is um. That Medicare, Medicaid. Are available to seniors for skilled nursing relief at home and in their own home, or their children's homes?
Yeah, so so the home care company that. That the the resident would um, bring on board to help provide the care. Would bill either Medicare or Medicaid directly and get reimbursed for those services. The the challenge with uh, with home care is you relying on. On your son or your daughter or family members to provide that gap care for that in-between for cooking meals. Um, and and helping with some ADLs and transportation. Uh, but it's much more cost-effective for Medicare and Medicaid. Uh, to provide those services in in a home setting versus a congregant care or a skilled nursing facility.
And when does that sixty or ninety-day clock start? Did that start on January one, or did that start February one?
It started on February fourth, when we noticed, when we notified DPH.
So you're thinking by the end of April. You'll have completely wound down all of your occupancy.
That's correct.
Okay, um. You'll obviously have um. A statistical, if not an in fact. Uh, oversupply of parking because the parking demand is uh, less for fifty units of. Uh, independent living versus um, hundred and forty-one units of skilled nursing care. What do you intend to do with that additional space that? In the parking area?
Well, right now, uh, we we intend to kind of leave it as is. Um, we're we're trying to figure out our costs as as construction costs continue to. To climb, um, you know, with with inflation and and supply chain issues. Uh, we would like to hopefully come back to the board at some point. Uh, with a with a presentation on taking out some of the parking and creating some green space, additional green space. Uh, one of the nice things about um, where our parking is, it happens to be behind the building. So you really can't see it from, from Highland Ave or Gould Street, and we do a pretty good job with our landscaping anyway. Uh, to screen the parking. So, um, yeah, we we. We do have intentions to do it, it's just a, a financial decision. Uh, the idea is to, you know, get the interior built and provide the amenities and spaces. Um, and. Inside for for residents and then, you know, make the building solid. Uh, and then work on the on the exterior. With the, with the parking.
Thank you, a couple of other questions. Um, one is, I, with with the change in ownership, is that an affiliated? Entity or those related parties?
So Wing Wingate at Needham Inc. is us, uh, with a, with the owner and the operator.
But you became the owner-operator in twenty sixteen. Was that because you were new to the facility and because you bought the business at that time? Or were you an affiliate of the prior?
No, so um. Wingate. Whatever, whatever the development entity was, uh, was the original developer. Uh, back in two thousand and six, I think it was, uh, it was transferred to uh, NHP. Um, and I think that's in in the record of the of the special permit. Uh, Wingate remained the operator. Uh, Wingate has been the operator since.
David specifically, you're saying Wingate Development LLC was the operator?
No, Wingate at Needham.
Okay.
Was the operator, is is the licensed operator, uh, has been the licensed operator since nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-eight. When the building opened.
Adam, if I may. Interrupting with the permission of Marty and Gene. Um, Timothy McDonald is, is an attendance and um. Uh, but he's on a tight, he's on a tight time schedule and. Opportunity to, to speak to us if he would like to.
Okay, and then when Tim's done, I have one more final comment, that's fine.
Okay, so, well, do you want to make your comment first, or?
Oh, I I'll I'll make this quick. I understand that you're that you're proposing affordable housing units of. Um, uh, five, which will be ten percent of the um, fifty units in total. We generally have a town policy that exceeds that, which would be twelve and a half percent, which I think is six point two five units. At minimum, I would like to see that raised to seven. And given the demand in the local geography. For more affordable units, I'd really like to see here ten units to be affordable of the fifty. Um, but uh, you know, we can discuss that topic subsequent, I'd certainly like to hear what Tim has to say.
Okay, so, um, yes, I see that Tim. Alex, you seem to be bringing Tim over over already. Tim, thank you for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I think the the comments in addition to the ones that I made in the letter, I think maybe would would be less about a systems issue and more about the sort of the personal effect. When Avery Manor and Avery Crossing closed. The placement services, which are the same placement services that were outlined earlier to the board interstate mandated. Left a lot of families frustrated, unsatisfied. More than a dozen families worked with staff from our aging services division to help with placement because they didn't find. Sufficient support from the state mandated process. That, you know, had a very real and tangible impact. I think the other thing to consider is many people place their loved ones into skilled nursing facilities. For proximity, so that they can visit them frequently, so that if there is an accident or a fall, they can get there quickly. Um, one of the town's department heads had a, her mother was in Avery Crossing, and she was there. Because that department head could be there within minutes. She would visit her, you know, daily and would be there within minutes if something happened. It has a real impact on the person in the facility, and it has a real impact on the family. When they have to go to Foxborough instead of Needham, or even if they're only going to Walpole. Um, that's a big difference, a five-minute ride versus a thirty-five or forty-minute ride. Um, I. Am certainly not as familiar with the representatives from Wingate about the larger sort of economic issues within the. Um, long-term care facility industry. I do think there are challenges for people in Needham as they age, you know. I do think there are challenges for people in Needham as they age, you know, that the council on aging and the board of health have done some work in this area. And are concerned about it. They were very concerned about the Avery closure and they wanted to sort of convey the, the sort of message that I relayed. Which is they're concerned about people being able to age safely in the community. They don't know that it necessarily benefits the community to have the facility close, or sorry, not close, tran- transition from. One hundred and forty beds to fifty independent living units. And that was sort of the message that I wanted to convey to the board.
I'm going to, since, since Tim is, is here with us. I'm going to ask the board members if they have any questions for Tim. Yes, Gene.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Marty, you gotta raise your hand before Gene does if you want to get.
Let Gene go ahead, that's fine.
You would not be good on Jeopardy because you don't, you don't get that buzzer down quickly.
You're right.
Tim, is, is Briarwood the only skilled nursing facility now in our town? Got that right, the one that's near Bethers, Reddick and Needham?
North Hill does operate a number of sort of skilled living facilities so that you can sort of age across the sort of spectrum, depending on your health. So Briarwood isn't the only one, no.
Okay, so I, of course I know about North Hill. But Briarwood is.
Briarwood and North Hill may be the only ones left.
That's my understanding.
Briarwood would be the only one left that isn't part of a continuing care retirement community.
Yes.
And we were told that one thousand, there were eight thousand four hundred empty beds in the state and one thousand one hundred in the county. I know Paul asked, you know, we're more, we're nearer to towns in, in Moosack County. And the figures weren't readily available, but the idea that. The state relocation. Permits the skilled nursing facility to locate facilities within twenty-five miles. I mean, that's a, as you point out, that's a long distance. You know, in this urban area of even, you know, suburban area here, that, that can easily be a thirty minute drive. As compared with the, you know, fifteen minute drive one might want. But I raised this issue now and I was going to raise it with Mr. Feldman, but since you're here, Tim. I'm concerned about two things. Skilled nursing facilities not only provide long-term care, but they also provide a rehab. For people who are coming out of the hospital and aren't ready to go home. And i- is that something we're losing also? And if Mr. Feldman would respond to that or, and Mr. McDonald as to whether. That's something of concern if we're losing that.
Yeah, I, I can answer that, Gene, so. Go, go back ten or fifteen years ago. We ran a, a great rehab program in, not only in, at Wingate at Needham, but in all our facilities. Our average length of stay was twenty-one days. With the advancement of, of medical technology, fewer and fewer people are actually going into, into rehab. You know, you add managed care into that and, and, and hospitals, you know, discharging patients to, to cut costs. Most people that are having total knees, total hips, total shoulders. With today's advancement are going immediately home. With home care, they're, they're getting their, their physical therapy at home. You know, their, their occupational therapy at home. It's a, a truly changing dynamic based on cost and medical advancements. Has nothing to do with skilled nursing.
So there's less demand for that, uh, uh, to begin with, all right. Is for, for the very poor, those who. Are whose bills are being paid through Mass Health. I think, David, you said something about the kinds of things that will be paid for in the home. Through Medicare and Medicaid, but that's still, the family has to be there to provide that twenty-four hour care. Those meals that, you know, making sure the person is up and dressed and all that. I have a close relative who is in that situation of needing twenty-four hour care. And fortunately, he has the financial resources to be able to pay for that. And my understanding is that what Medicare and Medicaid will pay for. Is quite limited and it's quite burdensome on families. Now, I mean, we know that our president would like us, would like to have enacted the Build Back Better bill. That will provide support for the poor to be able to have these services in your home. But is it realistic that patients you may have at Wingate now? Who are, who's, who exclusively are being paid by Medicare, Medicaid, I mean, will be able? To go home and get these services? I just, I have a hard time believing that that would really happen.
So like, like I, like I said earlier, that program is not for everybody. Those, those residents that need twenty-four hour skilled care in a skilled nursing facility. Those people will, will be transferred. Based on the decision that their families make. Those that can go home, that do have the wherewithal, have the assistance, they can certainly go home. And take advantage of, of home care and, and the services that Medicaid and Medicare will provide. Medicaid and Medicare will, will pay for skilled nursing and it's not, it's not just. You know, nine to five service, it's, it's round the clock service. So they have the ability, but there is a gap and it, it, there is a burden that's placed on, on the caregivers and family members. To provide that gap service. So you're right, it's, it's not for everybody, but for a large majority of, of the population. People are going home versus going into skilled nursing settings when they're discharged from the hospitals.
Okay, well, well, thank you, I have other questions that don't relate to this issue. I appreciate your response and very much appreciate Timothy McDonald's presence here and. Looking back at the minutes of November twelfth, I mean, November twelfth, when you came to have a discussion with us before. This is the very main, November sixteen, this is the very issue that I raised of concern, losing this facility in our town.
Thank you, Gene, Marty.
Yeah, I just have two big questions floating around in my head, I, and I. I'm just going to ask you, David, and, and ask you for your reactions because. I totally get what Tim is telling us. But I, I'm thinking. Are we, i- is it a valid exercise of whatever authority we have? To keep somebody in a business, to try to keep somebody in a business that. He sees no future in? Is that, is that a valid thing for us to be thinking about? And so, you know, I don't really have an answer, but I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that that's the, what, that's what we would be doing. At the same time. It wasn't very long ago that we heard from the, a new developer at the Carter Building. Who wants to. Do away. With. Independent living units. In a project and replace it with skilled nursing. To some degree. And so. And that's not, that's not quite accurate, Marty. But probably, okay, Evans, go ahead, feel free to correct me.
If you don't mind, Marty, they, what they want to replace it with is. Memory care and assisted living, not skilled nursing.
Fair enough, fair enough, okay, you're right, Evans, is that what you were going to say?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. So I, I, David, I don't know whether you have any reaction to my first thought, but. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that we would do anything to try to keep you. Your company in a business that you think is going to fail, or you, you know, it's not going to work. Either in the short or medium or long term. I, I don't know what's your reaction to that.
So my, my response to that, Marty, is, is simple. We've tried to hold on and to weather the storm. You know, we've been, we've been at this, like I said, you know, for twenty-five plus years, it was a great business. We, we provided great care, but times change, things change, medical advancements change. You know, it, it just caught to the point where we could no longer provide. The level of care that we were accustomed to giving to our residents. And once we got to that point, we said, this is crazy, what are we doing? And that's really when the realization hit that we need to make a change, we need to pivot away from this. And come up with something where we can, we can serve the community. And I, I totally understand why. You know, they're going to assisted living and memory care, number one, it's, it's smaller apartments. Okay, you can get away with smaller apartments, which means you can, you can increase the yield. There's a need for, for memory care. We see it next door at our own building, there is a need for assisted memory care. The, the downsides with, with, the downside with independent apartments and especially with an adaptive reuse. Like they're doing at, at Carter is you need to provide full kitchens, otherwise it's not considered independent. We like the independent market, we, we, we're doing very well. Next door, we, our average age next door at One Wing Gateway is, is eighty-six years old. We're missing a, a very. Narrow market of clientele, a lot of it's because of cost. And number two, part of it is stigma, you know, they, they, they tour One Wing Gateway and they see, they see older people. That may or may not look like them, or they don't want to see their future. And they don't want to pay for all the services because they don't need the services. So we're providing an opportunity for maybe someone that's a little bit younger, a little bit more independent. You know, doesn't need the transportation, doesn't need all the socialization, but it's there if they need it. So we, we see it as an opportunity to, to, to serve an underserved market within the community. And, you know, believe me, this was not an easy decision for us. We've been in the community, we love the community, we, we think we're part of the community and we want to be there for another twenty-five years. So, you know, I, I think I answered your questions, both of them.
I, I appreciate your response, I think it was a very thoughtful response and I do believe you, David. I, at the same time, I totally understand where Tim McDonald is coming from, it's hard, this is very hard, you know.
And I, I understand where Tim's coming from also. I can't speak to the process that Avery took. But when Avery closed five years ago, it was, it was, things were a little bit different. Things have changed in the, in the last five years. I mean, I can remember back in, in nineteen ninety-seven, the people I see in, in assisted living. Were our long-term patients in skilled, skilled nursing. So you, you see that, that transition and, and the change and. The, the extended life expectancy of our residents and, oh, really, people are. Are healthier, they're more independent, the advances of modern medicine has, has all contributed to this. So, you know, we have to change and skilled nursing is, 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 is going to be the, the casualty in all this.
Tim, did you have your hand raised, did you want to say something?
I think maybe in response to, to Mr. Jacob's question. I, I certainly understand that it's probably not realistic nor appropriate to compel an organization to continue to operate in a sphere that they. Don't see a future in it, as Mr. Feldman said. I, I do wonder, given the experience that the town has had and the impact that it had on town residents at Avery. Whether Wingate could make a commitment to, you know, and I think it would be a question of how. To make sure that there is a better, maybe more comprehensive transition plan for, for residents. I know there are state mandates on how that works, but maybe there's a way they could commit some extra resources to make sure that there are. Placements that leave the residents, you know, as satisfied as possible with, with their situation, knowing that there are many challenges with placing. People throughout the region.
Thank you. You know, you mentioned something, David, that has me thinking because I, I didn't. Think about. The fact that you are working with the facility. Behind One Wing Gate Place, what's there and, you know, I'm, I'm used to the model of the. Not exactly necessarily North Hill, but you know, that kind of model that has independent living and assisted living. Maybe and memory care, maybe and skilled nursing. Can you? You're operating both this building and the building. At One Wing Gate, the, the facilities at One Wing Gate?
It's an affiliated operator, yes.
Okay, it's an affiliated operator. Will there be a? Maybe synergy is the word that comes to mind between these, well, can you explain what is? What is offered there, is that all assisted living and memory care and, and, and will there be the kind of, because. What's concerning me is you, you have independent living. And as people age and they need to go into assisted living. I'm not, on just, just your application. It looks like, well, sorry, you're on your own, sell your apartment and find yourself an assisted living unit. Will, will there be some sort of a synergy between these, these independent living? Apartments and the ability to just go next door if they wind up needing assisted living.
Yeah, of course, we, we would never turn anybody away, assuming, assuming we had apartments available. But let's, let's be clear, independent living, we don't provide any care. If, if a resident needs any type of services, they bring it in from the outside. And it, it's really, it's really based on how much services can they afford to bring in from the outside? Before they need to make that transition to assisted living. That, in, in that case, it's, it's really a, a financial decision more than, than a care.
It's partly a financial decision, but it's partly a decision to go into. To choose to go, to choose to buy an independent living or to rent. I don't, I, I don't know what your business model is, whether it's rent or, 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 you know, like North Hill, you put a large deposit down. But, you know, to, to go into the, into the independent living. It helps to know that if you reach the point where you can no longer maintain yourself. In your independent living unit. There is a place that is committed to taking you, assuming there's a bed available. As opposed to, oh my, you know, because otherwise you're just, you're just renting an apartment. You could be, you can be in Rosemary, what, what, where do you, what's it called where you, you are.
Rosemary Ridge, although Rosemary Ridge is not age limited.
Right, it's not age limited, but you, you know, you can, you can get yourself an apartment in Rosemary, Rosemary Ridge and have a lot of the amenities that you're going to be offering. And have the same issue when you, when your physical condition gets to the point where you can no longer sustain yourself in your apartment. So.
No, we, 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 we provide the, the full continuum. We would, we would absolutely be able to transition a resident from, from say, independent. To, to assisted.
Is that going to be part of your business model?
Yes, of course.
Okay, good.
Assuming you have the beds and the capacity.
Right, of course, but you, you know, it's always contingent upon having a space available, you know. If the assisted living facility is full, if they need memory care and the memory care facility is full, you know, I'm not going to kick somebody out. Okay. Yes, Adam.
I don't have anything further for Tim, but I did have another question for David, I don't know if we want. Tim to continue or?
I'm all set with Tim. Marty and Gene, do you have any more questions for Tim?
Uh, I do not.
I, 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 I have, I have a response for Tim, based on his, his, his last comment. Um. All, all I can say is um. We are working hard with the, with the families uh to place these residents. Uh, we've increased our social services hours uh to help assist uh with the transfer. Um, we are having regular meetings uh both um. Through the phone uh and Zoom meetings um as groups uh to make this as, as seamless as possible. Uh, we understand that it's a, it's a big deal uh for the residents and the families. Um, but like I said uh earlier in, in the opening. Um. It's ultimately the family's decision where uh the residents uh finally end up. Uh, we don't make that decision for them. Uh, they make that themselves. Uh, we support them. Uh, and we do everything we can uh to make it as. Uh, as less stressful as possible. So that's, that's the only commitment I can, I can make to you. Um, like I said, I don't know what happened with, with, with Avery. Uh, but you know, five years ago, it was a little different, different space uh than where we are today.
Thank you.
David, I had a question. How many properties does Wing Gate have in total?
Uh.
A dozen?
Well, twelve, twelve to fifteen.
And are you shutting down all? Um. Skilled nursing. Facilities in all of your. Properties?
Uh, not all of them. Some of them we own, some of them we operated. Um, the ones that we operated, we got out of those uh operating agreements uh with the landlord. Um. Some we are keeping uh where we have. Um. Where we're not staff challenged or occupancy challenged. Uh, we have a. One property in particular where um. You know, it's not great, but it's not as bad. We don't have the uh. The agency add-on uh like we have in some of the other facilities. Um, but yeah, for the most part, we, we are exiting uh the skilled space.
So how many, how many skilled? Nursing facilities do you intend to maintain?
Um. Right now, hopefully, it's just, it's gonna probably just be one. Um, and if that, and if that turns. Um. You know, like, I, I can't, I can't predict the future, but as of right now, uh, it looks like we're just gonna be operating the, the one that we own.
Now, where is that?
That's in Kingston. Massachusetts.
Outside Plymouth, I think.
Yes.
Uh. Okay. How many beds do you have there? Last question, I'm sorry.
Uh, that facility is a hundred and sixty beds. But again, that's, that's part of a campus, so we have the full continuum uh to um. To Paul's point earlier, uh, we provide the full continuum there.
I think we need to transition here, guys, and get away from the skilled nursing questions, cuz I think. We're past that because what's really in front of us.
That's correct.
A special permit application for. Um, independent living apartments.
That's, that's right.
Focused in on, we need to focus in on the actual application. That's in front of us to approve a, a special permit. For fifty uh independent living.
Correct.
Apartments.
We also have three members of the public with their hand up.
Yeah, I, I, but we always go to the planning board members first before we go to the public. But thank you for mentioning that. Yes, Gene.
Right, um, I have about five uh questions or comments. Um, and I'll start with the confusion about the ownership. There are three entities mentioned, um, two in the application. Wingate Development LLC, who's uh described as the applicant. And Wingate at Needham Inc. And part of this is to approve a, a transfer to, I'm just confused about that whole thing. Who owns this property, this two and a half acre property now? Who is going to own it when uh it's no longer be as a skilled nursing, doesn't need an operator? And is an apartment building? And also, what is SVP Real Estate Development, who is the address C? Uh, on the traffic report? So who, who, who's in charge here?
So. Wingate Needham Inc. is the owner. Um, they became the owner in two thousand sixteen. They will remain the owner um. Once it's, if it's redeveloped. Uh, Wingate Development is, is the developer. Uh, who's gonna be responsible for, for doing the conversion.
Okay, so it's the developer. Um, so um. At some point, then is there gonna be a transfer of ownership from Wingate Development Inc. to? Wingate Needham Inc.?
Gene, um, what Mr. Feldman was saying was that Wingate Needham Inc. is the current owner.
Wingate Needham Inc. is the current owner.
Right, they own.
And I still don't understand what it means to say Wingate Development LLC is the developer and the applicant. What exactly is its role?
The, the role of the developer is to um come before the board, get the, get the. Apply for the special permit, be responsible for the construction uh and the conversion. Wingate at Needham's the owner, Wingate at Needham's the one that's gonna be paying the bills, Wingate at Needham is the one that's gonna be operating the facility.
So at the end of the development stage, when it's built, it gets, it's a, a, you know, occupancy permit. Then Wingate Development goes away and. Wingate Needham Inc. is the owner, is that right?
That's correct.
And operator.
And so it, Wingate Needham Inc. will be the, and will be the operator. Okay, all right, I understand.
But who's SVP?
Who is SVP Real Estate Development?
That's just a title. SVP means Senior Vice President. The correspondence was addressed.
Oh.
SVP.
Isn't it good we have a real estate guy on the board?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you clarified that, Marty, cuz I was about to say, I don't know who that is.
All right, so now. Moving on to the project itself, um. Um, I agree with Adam on a percent of affordable. Um, I don't know that I would necessarily go to twenty percent, but um, we um. We have moved to twelve and a half percent uh and the rezoning that occurred more recently for this is a very similar kind of uh. Housing for, you know, seniors focused uh, uh, at Avery Square. Um, the requirement is twelve and a half percent. Now, I realize that our zoning calls for ten percent for your site. Um, but I really feel very strongly it would be good to have the twelve, twelve and a half percent, just to carry on what we know is coming. And we've got a um housing um. Housing Plan Working Group, it was going to be uh making recommendations on this issue in the next couple of months. And I just hate to let this escape with ten percent. When we know we're going in the direction of a much higher, of a higher percentage. Now, twelve and a half percent gives you uh, a, a little over six units. And i- it says you round up and that means seven. So I think we're really talking about six, if you're round down, or seven, if you're round up. Uh, but I, I really would want to see that. Um. And I don't know if you wanna react to that, David, or just realize that I think you've got some, a couple of members of the board who feel strongly about that.
Yeah, I, I think um, you know, when I was before you uh previously. Um, we were kinda discussing, you know, what are scenarios? You, you had mentioned that. And we went back and we took a look at the, at the underwriting and, and. I, I think if that's what the, the board wishes, um, we, we could do uh the, the seven units.
That's very good to know, okay. Um, then um, living in a multifamily, as I do with a hundred and five units. Um, and uh, been, 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 been living here for seven years. Um. Well. I'm. There's a couple of things that I know people in our building, I serve on the board of, uh, cuz this is a condominium. Uh, people want open space, especially during these recent COVID, COVID years. Can't we have more benches outside? We want places to socialize outside. And you said, you consider that, but later in the future, you're not sure if the budget will accommodate it. But as you enter the property from Gould Street. There's a parking lot right there, big, big rectangle. Couldn't that easily, without great cost, be made into um? Uh, an open space area? For people to sit out with a few trees and grass, nothing horribly expensive.
So, but we, we do have a, a little walking path uh just beyond that parking lot. Um, we created that when uh we did the development at One Wing Gateway. Where we have sidewalks and some, um, I think there's three benches out there and a sitting area. Um, so that's really the, the outdoor space. We will look at um. Taking out some of, you know, taking out some of that parking in that area that you just mentioned. Um, the cost of reclaiming asphalt is extremely expensive. And we have utilities and drainage that we have to worry about that are there uh existing because of the parking lot, that would also have to be removed. Um, so. You know, it, it seems like, oh, you just take out a parking lot, plant some grass and, and call it a day, uh, but it's not as, it's not as easy as that.
Just saying, um, you see that the um. The site plan is, is very hard to read. Um, so what I'm referring to is the park, is the area. Ri- right as you can win off Gould Street, but I think you're saying now that you mentioned. Over to the side, I call it the side of the building, over toward um. Pink Putnam Street? That's whether you have the sitting area and walk?
Yes. And that's, that's, that's planted with trees and, and uh nice grass area and some benches. Um, so we do, we do have that area already uh onsite.
That's where you're putting the bikes, bicycle. So you're, are you saying that if you remove some parking spaces? It would be more likely in that direction to add to that existing open space?
Right.
Rather than the one right off Gould Street? Okay, um, but I, you know, of course, naturally, we wanna see the plan, you know, and.
Yeah.
You know, where, where the tree is gonna be and so forth. I don't know how far to take that.
We, we've done this before uh with, with, with the planning board and, you know, obviously we'll. We would come back before the board um and make a presentation of what we're proposing. Uh, to take out parking and, and create some green space and. We'd absolutely uh provide a landscaping plan uh to show you the, the type of trees, the locations. Um, where we're gonna have grass and where we're gonna have uh impervious surfaces.
So you mean if we got a condition and the special permit you're seeking right now? That a certain number of parking spaces will be converted to open space? And we just, that's all we say at the moment. And um eventually you will do that. Um, that would be the way to go?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we're okay with that.
Yeah, okay, um. Then another thing that's uh very popular is to have a good-sized party room. And I see that on the second floor, you have what you refer to as the chef's kitchen. And then you've got a room next to it. It's pretty limited. It's like, you know. Accommodating, you know, sixteen people around four small tables. Um. Would you consider um expanding that and, and not having that storage there on that, at that particular location? You've got loads of storage in the basement, which is another thing people like.
Yeah.
So. Um, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, so that's, that space is, is actually a flex space, so we, we're designing it where we can um. Have pocket doors between the chef's kitchen and that club room. But opening up the uh, the pocket doors kinda makes it one space and there's bar seating at the, at the chef's uh. Counter top and, and we can put some high tops in there as well. So, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think you. You're never gonna get um fifty people in that space and you'll never get fifty residents to agree on. On, on, on what they wanna do. Um, but I think, you know, providing space for, for twenty, twenty-five people is, is appropriate.
Yeah, because when people downsize and they can no longer accommodate their families in their units for the birthday party and the Christmas party. Um, that's what people will be looking for.
Right.
And, you know, twenty-four uh at least people uh accommodating in that room. And I think you've got a nice. Nice uh arrangement of different uh rooms like that around, around the building. Um, then uh, one more small thing, um, I noticed that you have the bicycle racks. But what's really needed is a storage space indoors for bicycles. I'm telling you, it's an issue. Um, and I, do you have a storage space that's suitable for bicycles indoors?
Uh, no, but we have an area uh which is presently the loading dock. It's a covered loading dock outside that we can certainly convert, we can convert into out, outdoor bike storage, covered, protected outdoor bike storage.
I think you're gonna need that and I think it'd be good to have the plan show it. Um, and then this is my final question and probably one that. I, I have been asking for years. I go to uh, you know, Chamber of Commerce. Real estate forums and ask this question and I never seem to get a good answer. Why is it that you want rental apartments rather than condominium units? When people are downsizing and selling their suburban house, they wanna take the proceeds. And invest part of it, so, so they have the security. Of knowing their rent won't increase and the condo fees are under control and um. A- a- and their security of knowing they'll be able to stay there. Why not just convert the whole thing to a condominium?
Our, our business model has always been rental. Uh, we, we've never, we've never gotten into uh the buy-in model. Um, there's, there's barriers to that. Um, you're, you're more susceptible to uh economic conditions and housing market. Uh, whereas rentals provide an opportunity. Um, for instance, say, say Mrs. Smith. Has a house down the Cape that she wants to spend all summer in. But she doesn't wanna live there in, in the winter and she wants to come up, be closer to her, her family. This provides an opportunity to have. Uh, a rental unit that isn't ex- expensive. She's not paying all that money for, for a condo. And she can still uh spend her summers down the Cape. So it, it provides a little bit more flexibility. Um, you know, if, if somebody's a snowbird and they wanna go down to Florida for two, two, three months. Um, they just paying a rental, they're not locked into, all right, I have this investment in my condo. It may preclude me from doing something else. That's, that's the way.
I know, I know you won't, you know your market. Uh, I've heard, I've heard it said that lenders won't lend. Uh, because condominium uh is more speculative and you don't know what the market will be. I don't know if that's. A factor, but in any event, I'll, I'll leave that alone cuz I know there are other issues that uh. Um, but I know this is gonna be an issue for the um. Housing Plan Working Group uh when we decide what needs, what our local needs are. And I think we do have local needs for condominium development. Okay, uh, thank you for your responses. Um, I'm all set.
Marty, you have anything more?
No.
Adam, before I turn it over to the attendees. You're, you're muted, you're all set, okay. So. Among the attendees, I see three people with their hands raised. Um, I noticed uh Terrence Ryan. And has his hand raised very early on, so Alex, if you would bring Terrence Ryan over.
Hi, I'm Terrence Ryan.
Welcome.
How's it going? I live at uh seventy-nine Evelyn Road. Um, worked with Dave Feldman in the past with some of the other builds and Wing Gates a. Good company and, you know, to work with, a good neighbor. Um, so when I was looking at the submittal. Uh, you know, that the, was submitted to the planning board, uh, the thing that caught my eye was the site plan. And it's, I think it's on page forty-five of the packet. Um, Dave Feldman had a meeting last night, which was really great, an information session for the butters and answered my question. Dave Feldman had a meeting last night, which was really great, an information session for the butters and answered my question. Just answered it with regards to a technicality that since the site plan is only for Lot B that the other lots are not really of concern. And after I thought about it, I thought, you know what, I think it's something that I wanted to bring up at this meeting. Just because I think it deserves some attention. Since moving here, you know, almost twelve years ago, you know, I see Wing Gate as, as one campus. I don't see it as three lots. It is three lots, but I see it as one campus and I, you know, campus was used previously and, and the word synergy as well. You know, now that the Lot B will be converted into more independent living units. You know, I see it definitely as one campus, you know, because there's independent living units in Lot C and well as Lot B. You know, in the submittal packet, the site plan shows the site for Lot B, which will be adapted. It also shows Lot A and C also owned by Wing Gate. The Lot A shows the existing building built about nine or ten years ago. But it doesn't show the parking spaces or the covered entranceway on it that are abutting Lot C. Which is like the newer building within Lot C. And it also doesn't show the existing building and parking spaces, parking spaces and removed driveway on Lot C at all. You know, and since the building and parking spaces and continuous sidewalk have been there for over five years. You know, I feel it's important for a couple of reasons to show it on Lot C as well as, you know, this middle for Lot B. You know, for instance, you know, since there's a hundred forty-two nursing beds going away, going to fifty independent living units and references to affordable housing. You know, the percentages in the Lot C building, how many of those are affordable housing? Another reason is just the parking spaces. I know there was, there's an excess of parking spaces. And there is some parking spaces on Lot A which leads into Lot C. And, you know, I know this has nothing to do with the Lot B build. But, you know, it could be just from an overall campus perspective, maybe it might be better to remove the parking spaces on Lot C. I don't know. It's not my business, but it's just another reason why I feel like if Lot C and A were shown to the existing conditions currently, it would help in that process with the planning board. You know, there, there's dumpsters on, in between the border of Lot A and C. And, you know, they might assist in the dumpster services for Lot B also. So they might be related and have some synergy. The large backup generator, it's on Lot C. It could be in the future, you know, have a synergy for the whole campus. You know, another reason why to have existing conditions. Even from the perspective of the resident, the buildings at Lot B or C, you know, Lot B, Lot C, I think, when it was first being developed, I remember they were marketing it had a pool as well as a movie theater. You know, which possibly, you know, if my mom was there, she'd be making her way to the pool, you know, going between the buildings and making friends everywhere. And vice versa, you know, the Lot B will have golf simulator. So the Lot C residents may want to come over to the Lot B, you know, and have that synergy. See, the parking garage, you know, say someone in Lot B has a nice car and they don't want to have snow on or clear the snow off. Want in a more secure location, they might use Lot A's garage. So the last point is the, you know, since the bill was completed about five years ago. You know, I, I would have thought there would have been electronic haz belts, you know, that could have been imported onto the site plan, you know, relatively easily, you know, and, and I guess I was surprised by that. So to fully review this middle, I think it would be prudent to ask Wing Gate to update the site plan to include the existing building and parking spaces on Lot C as well as the canopy and other appearances on Lot A that are not shown. To properly review this middle and I, I asked the board to please request that it be updated and resubmitted by Wing Gate before an approval for the Lot B plan is given, you know, just to have a, a better understanding of the whole campus, if you will. And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jill Khan. Has her hand raised. Alex, if you would bring Jill Khan over, please. Hi, Jill. Jill, you're still muted.
I was saying, I'm not a nice person, so hopefully I'll make some sense at this crazy late hour. But I do have experience with Wing Gate. My mom lived there for eight and a half years until her passing. And so I'm kind of been following this issue and been interested in it from a personal perspective. I also have a lot of friends who are going through similar with aging parents. I'm of that generation, the sandwich generation and whatnot. I had a couple of thoughts. First of all, I just wanted to mention that not every place has the openings like Wing Gate has been having recently on the excess beds that you were talking about. For example, at Newbridge in Dedham, there's about a year wait to get a bed in the nursing home. And there are other facilities around that have very long waits. So I wanted to point out that it's not an across-the-board happening in every facility about empty beds everywhere. Certain facilities have been having that problem. Wing Gate as a nursing home has had lower ratings than other local nursing homes. Usually in like two and a half or three stars out of five. And in the Medicare and Medicaid government ratings that you can check when you're looking at nursing homes for your loved ones, those have also been lower for Wing Gates and also lower for Briarwood than other facilities in surrounding town. So that has contributed to the empty beds you've been having. So that's just one thing I wanted to point out. If any of you wants to, like Jean might be interested, she seems like a humanist and I don't know who else. Just give a call for the heck of it to Newbridge on the Charles in Dedham. And say you have a loved one and you're thinking you'd like to have a tour and how long would it be? Say for them to get into the facility if you do like what you see. Just give a call. You don't even have to go over there and you'll be told about a year or longer wait for a bed in the nursing home. So it's not across the board. I have to take exception to that point that was made earlier. Now I also have a question and my question is, David said that these rental units are quote unquote, not going to be that expensive. So if somebody has, say, you said Mrs. Smith as an example, has a home in the Cape that she would likes to go to in the summer, then she can do that and then she can live here. You know, it's the new Wing Gate and quote unquote, these are not going to be that expensive. So I wonder if you could just briefly, it's very, very late, but just give a rough idea what you're talking about. Like the studios, the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms, what do you consider not that expensive on the cost?
Oh, the, the price range are going to be from three thousand to four thousand dollars a month. And in compare.
For studios up to, to through, through two bedrooms?
Yes, yeah, between three and four thousand dollars a month, depending on.
The studio would be how much?
Three thousand.
So a studio three thousand you consider not that expensive?
Well, comparatively speaking to, to other independent living where you'll pay anywhere between eight and ten thousand dollars a month. Yeah, it's, it's it's reasonable for the amenities that you get. Listen, it's not for everybody. I, I get that.
Well, I wasn't saying that it's for everybody. No place is for everybody. But what I was asking was you were using the example of Mrs. Smith. And this might be a great place for her because if she wanted to spend some time in the Cape and sometime here and your proposed facility is not, quote unquote, these are your words, are, are not that expensive, will not be that expensive. So I wondered what is, what do you consider not that expensive? So three thousand for a studio and how much for a one bedroom?
It, it, it depends. The range will be between three and four thousand dollars a month.
For a one bedroom?
The low being three thousand for a studio and four thousand for a two bedroom. One bedroom would probably be in between. And just regarding my comment, I was answering a question from, from Jean regarding a condo. Being a, a buy-in versus a rental. That's what, that's what the comment was for.
But Jean was speaking to an issue which I've been speaking about. I'm a twenty-three-year town meeting member in Needham. And I've been speaking about this for years in meetings and we haven't gotten very far and hopefully the new housing group will make more inroads. But what, what is a huge need in our town is for people who are, say, age fifty, fifty-five, sixty and up who raised their family here and then their family is now on their own. And then these people don't want to move into rentals because if they do that, say they move into a rental at your place and there's, let's just say it's a couple and they spend four thousand a month on the rental, right? So that's fifty thousand a year. So in fifteen years, what happens? I mean, they've just run out of money. Whereas Jean was pointing out, and I agree with Jean, that the same couple, if they sell and cash out their smaller Needham house and let's say it's paid off, there's no mortgage and they get seven fifty. It's a, you know, a Cape or whatever. If they were to be able to move into a condominium, then they can take that equity and they're not just seeing the equity go decrease, decrease, decrease every year. People's lifespans have been increasing. You know, it used to be when you were, when I was a kid, the relatives who were sixty were really, really old. They would fall asleep on the couch with cigarettes in their hands. And these were doctors in my family smoking. Okay. So that was really old and sixty isn't old anymore. The need for condos in town is huge. I personally know more than a hundred people who would want to move into a condo, whether it's five hundred thousand, six hundred, seven hundred, whatever, cash out their house, have a little money left over, then go into a rental. I don't personally consider a three thousand dollar studio an affordable option for Needham. And I want to also take exception to one other thing and then I'll let another speaker go and there's two more topics tonight. But I wanted to speak to whomever spoke earlier that many people can just go home. That was discussed in the beginning of this Wing Gates section, that you can just go home. I can tell you, because my mother lived at Wing Gate eight and a half years, that many people at Wing Gate cannot just go home. In fact, the vast majority, well, they wouldn't be at a Wing Gate. My mother was, she couldn't walk, she also had dementia. And her husband was four years older and could not care for her. They had caregivers come into the home for a while and then that turned out to be very difficult to venture because somebody would call in, they were sick, they couldn't come, et cetera. And her husband, four years old, could not help her. Okay? There was nowhere else for her to go. She would never have been able to get up the steps. I live on a little hill here in Needham, okay? And I work full-time and have children. So how, who's going to care for a mother in the house? I, and everybody else I knew at Wing Gate, I knew a lot of residents there in eight and a half years. They had similar situations. They wouldn't have been there had they had somewhere else to go. So I take exception if you're saying that, you know, they can just go somewhere else. They wouldn't be at Wing Gate if they had somewhere else to go. So that's, I don't want to tie up the conversation anymore, but I think that some of the things here were really not. I, I have to say that they were disingenuous. That's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Jean?
I respond to Jill. I want to encourage you, Jill, to, to stay involved with the housing planning. I, I appreciate your ideas very much. And the Housing Plan Working Group. We have a meeting coming up on March tenth. And you can, it's not a hearing, but then we're going to have a big public session with opportunities to speak on March twenty-fourth. And your ideas are so good. Please stay involved.
Thank you. I've been speaking on this whenever there's been an opportunity for a number of years and writing on it for a number of years. I did not apply for one of those positions in the housing working group just because I work full-time, I volunteer. And I'm kind of stretched a little bit too thin, but I have a big interest in it. And if there is a public hearing Zoom room person I would attend and I have done so in the past. I'm of that age and I've got a zillion friends in town and they're also of the age that we're already thinking about this for ourselves, for our neighbors, et cetera. There is nowhere, and I'm not the kind of girl that's going to say, you know what, I think I'll just go out to Foxborough or Rentham. Or wherever somewhere I've lived in this community thirty-two years, this is my home. So this is where I'm going to stay. And there were no opportunities for condos in a range of five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, seven fifty. There are none in town. They started like one point two million dollars. Yeah, Adam, I'm a real estate agent as well as you are and I've lived here for thirty-two years. There were not five hundred, except at Rosemary Ridge. I'm talking enough and down on Greendale. I'm not speaking about somewhere with eight hundred square feet. Okay, I'm talking about somewhere like Jean was saying that smaller places don't have room for your family to gather. All right? I'm talking about something with, say, two thousand square feet. You point me in town to somewhere with two thousand square feet and three bedrooms to base that's in five or six hundred thousand dollars. And you can email me and you can find me, you know, anywhere or message me on Facebook if you want my email. And you tell me where those condos are and I, I'd love to know, being a thirty-two-year resident and a twenty-three-year town meeting member, a real estate agent, a writer, an editor, I was a substitute teacher last year during the pandemic. I think I get around Needham in a lot of capacities.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Michael Ruddy has his hand raised. So Alex, if you would bring Michael Ruddy over. Hi, Michael, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. Michael Ruddy, sixty-nine Melrose, sad, quick comment. It's not use-related, but it is rather site-related. And that's that Wing Gate never plows the snow from their sidewalks. I've complained several times about it and to no avail. So that makes it very dangerous for pedestrians on Highland. I just request a simple condition that Wing Gate plow the sidewalk, especially on Highland. I think that's something the planning board can require in the special permit. Maybe even actually there's a new cycle track there. The, the bike lane would be great if, if they could plow that as well, but especially the sidewalk. I mean, the sidewalk is, is never plowed, so it's quite, quite dangerous.
Lee, isn't there a town bylaw that requires them to plow the sidewalk?
There is. Three dot one dot. It's actually in revision right now. And, but it doesn't include assisted living or even independent living facilities.
It, there, there's an article on the warrant for the upcoming annual town meeting that will require multifamily housing to plow the sidewalk outside their property. And I think it would, will apply to this development. This development is multifamily housing. Presently, only commercial establishments are required to plow or snow and remove ice from in front of their establishments. So this is going to be a big change. And I think it will affect this development, whether we have it in our permit or not, if, if town meeting approves it.
Yeah, I know. It actually did come before the select board in their last meeting, the wording for the warrant. I don't think they've finalized it yet. But I didn't know that it included the multifamily. That's great, but it's, it's something that's not enforced. It's a bylaw that's, that's not enforced. Police Department, I've spoken to them and they've very proudly told me that never have they ever issued a citation. So, yeah, it'd be great if, if that could be included as a condition to the special permit. I think it certainly would fall under traffic relief, you know, in terms of encouraging people to walk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone else with a hand raised among the attendees. So with that, I guess my question for the board is, where are we? Marty?
I would just like to pick up on Mr. Ryan's suggestion that we have a plan modification requirement showing existing conditions on the entire campus. I think that's a good idea.
I concur.
I concur.
You want to um continue the hearing in order to get that before we close the hearing and proceed with the the application for a special permit? Or uh
I don't have any objection to that, but I would not insist on that.
So, well, I think we're either going to continue the hearing or we're going to close the hearing. Those are our two options. I don't know of any other options, so I need a motion for one of those.
I move to close the hearing subject to receiving an updated site plan that includes the um uh existing infrastructure and building and lot C.
Do I have a second?
Uh, well, I'll second that, but I I I phrased it as the entire campus.
Yeah.
A, B, and C. So if there's anything else missing, I want to, I think.
It's A, B, and C, Adam.
That's a friend. So I I revise my motion. Thanks for the uh clarity. A on uh lots, A, B, and C.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to close the hearing? With that, with that condition. Not hearing any or not seeing any, I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the hearing's closed. We'll have a decision for the next meeting, Jean. Ali?
Yes, I'll prepare a draft decision.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Can I ask when, what will be the hearing at which that decision will be discussed?
The fifteenth of March.
Two weeks from tonight.
The hearing is closed, but I I just want to follow up comment because we had a lot of discussion uh about condominium development as compared with apartment. I I know very well that under uh case law in Massachusetts, it's not considered um a proper uh subject of zoning to um insist one way or another that development be apartment or condominium. And uh any, any members of the public who may be listening, um, I want them to feel aware that we we realize that um that we have no power to to demand that one way or another.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, with that again, I thank you all for coming tonight. It was a lively discussion. I appreciate it. And it was good seeing you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I need to find my agenda.
Oh, who is?
Yes.
I'm working out of my bedroom. How much longer this is going to take? I may want to move to my living room uh so Steve can have the bedroom. Um, do you think we're going to be here a long time?
Another hour?
You tell me whether you think we have a much of a discussion on the sixteen eighty-eight decision or whether you think we're just going to vote the decision pretty much as
That's from me.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't see where we have a lot more. Jean, because I don't
Another uh another fifteen or twenty minutes. Okay, fifteen or twenty minutes, let's go.
Yeah, um the amendment for the for the brew pub and the micro brewery.
Page fifty-nine of our decision.
Right.
Of our packet.
Yes, and um so the issue in front of us is that question is whether this is ready to be voted to send to the select board for them to send it back to us so that we can then schedule a hearing and proceed to get this on the uh on the warrant for the for the special town meeting in May. Is there any?
Show move.
But we'll wait, wait. We were provided with a plan of the area of um Webster Street near the Needham line, near the Charles River. Uh, because wasn't there a suggestion um that we might expand the area in which um either the micro, micro brewery is allowed? Uh, is that something we want to discuss? It it's not in the in the draft now, is it, Lee?
It's not in the draft now, so that that use is not allowed in um Highland Commercial one twenty-eight.
I would like to, I would like
I thought it was Adam who was interested in adding, and I didn't want to forget that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I intended to bring that up and I do think that that area, just as any other industrial area, uh is ripe, I think. Uh I'll keep it that simple. I wish to include it for actually for both uses.
And there was a suggestion, though, or a possibility, um, and the reason the plan was provided that we might um talk about only a certain distance from uh the Charles River or be something like between Charles Street and the Charles River and not include the other area over toward the uh one twenty-eight interchange, I believe. That was the concept. Is that anything you want to consider?
I would like to include both uses north of Highland up to uh Central Avenue. On the west side from the highway and on the east boundary to the river.
Did you say Central Avenue?
Central Avenue?
Well, because industrial comes up that up there. There's an industrial district off Reservoir before Elliot on Central, correct?
Where where do you see Central on this map?
No, that that's not what this map is showing, but um that's different, right?
I thought, I I thought we were talking about the Highway Commercial one just twenty-eighth district, which runs between the highway and the Charles River on both sides of Highland Avenue.
Right, so I, so more specifically, I would like to propose, I propose that we have both uses in that area. We include both area, both uses in Highland Commercial one twenty-eight.
I think the question was whether or not that it was, whether or not it's a policy matter, you wanted to have it along the, along the, that entire strip. Or if um the brewery use in particular, not the pub, the 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 pub use is currently allowed under the draft proposal along the entire corridor. But whether the brewery use should be allowed along that entire quarter or should it, or should, like, let me, let me finish. And I think the question, I think the question was, um, was that use more appropriately um directed um to, 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 to be closer to the Charles River itself? Um, and not along the entire quarter.
So I, what I'm suggesting is that the micro brewery, that is a perfectly fine space. That the micro brewery being uh included, if the market is there for it uh in that geography.
At this stage, why don't we just include it? Send it, selectmen, they'll send it back for public hearing and we can always change it if we need to.
You talked about the Highland Commercial one twenty-eight district. Including micro brewery in addition to, in a, in addition to brew pub.
Correct.
Okay.
And are we only talking about the, I guess you'd call it the northern uh northwestern side of the street where Staples is?
Um, I don't, I don't think at this late stage we want to start divvying up a a zoning district and having different uses in different sections of zoning districts. We've never done that. We don't, we don't, we don't have anywhere in our bylaw where we say you, 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 you can have this use in the northwest corner of the zoning district, but not in the southeast corner of the zoning district.
We actually do in the Neighborhood Business District off Central Avenue uh have that uh within a certain distance of um, I forget if it's the Charles River or the Route one twenty-eight interchange. It doesn't include the entire district.
Um, well, just because, just because we say we have a condition that says it has to be a certain a certain distance from the Charles River, but you 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 know, but you're going to start figuring out which streets it's going to be on now? Do you want to get this to the select board tonight or not?
I I I'm content with the, personally, I'm content with the way it is right now. Um, I, I, I know that Adam wanted to raise this, so.
I, I
Well, the way, the way, the way, the way it is right now is that brew pub is not allowed in that district, so it will have to be.
Wait.
Well, no.
No, that's not true.
It's the other way around.
Oh, it's the other way around, I'm sorry.
Brewery is not.
So my, my brewery is not allowed, so we can act, we can add that, I think, under, under paragraph six.
Right.
Um, and what we send to the select board. I think the other issue that came up, uh, was a conversation that I had with the town manager is that, you know, we're, Needham is not, does not allow um um alcohol to be served absent this, absent the presence of food. Um, and to actually have that, which is basically functioning as a bar, would actually, you know, require um town meeting action and in, in, and, and, and vote of the entire town. So we had put a sentence in the brew pub definition um to, that addressed um to kind of deal with what we thought might be a, a bar kind of use, which reads, a sentence reads, "To the extent permitted by its license, malt beverages might maybe consumed on the premise without the necessity of also consuming food." I would like to suggest that in the, in, because of that, that particular use is not allowed in Needham, that that sentence be deleted in what we, in what we send to the select board.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
You do.
That sentence would be deleted to the extent permitted by licensed malt beverages may be considered without the necessity of also consuming food. Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, so then if you want to vote it, I think as we've just, as we've modified it, I can transfer to the selectmen and
I just want to be, I just want to be clear on that. So if there was a brew pub, uh, you could, like, just as you would go to um uh Blue on Highland. You could sit, you know, you could choose not to have a burger and just eat and just have a beer. So the same is true with a brew pub, that wherever the brew pub is established, that you can go in and you're not required to eat, you can still just have a beer.
I think technically, Adam, you're not supposed to be able to sit
Yes.
at Blue on Highland and have a beer without food.
No, no.
I'd serve it to you, but I think it, but I think it's in violation of our bylaws.
No, no, the requirement is that the, is that Blue needs to be able to serve and provide food. It's not a mandate that a customer is required to cons, to purchase and consume the food.
Adam, I don't know that you're right on that. Um, and I think this sentence needs to go. I think it's inconsistent with town policy.
Whatever it is, Adam, 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 whatever it is, by taking out the sentence, the condition is going to be whatever our bylaws currently provide.
I, 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 I get that. I'm not saying to not take it out. But just to be clear, you can go to Ray's and you can have a vodka, you can have a gin and tonic and you're not legally required to also order food.
The answer is, to the extent that that is legal under our current bylaws, it will be legal under a blue pub. We're not agreeing with you that it is legal under our current bylaws.
I understand.
Okay. We're not changing our current bylaws anywhere by these two changes that we're making.
I understand.
So I haven't heard a motion in a second.
I move to um adopt uh Article One uh relating to brew pubs as written with the addition of uh micro brewery in paragraph six as an allowed use. And by removing the sentence that begins to the extent permitted by its license in the definition of brew pub in pair, in art, in item number one.
And send it to the
And send it to the select board.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Jean, thank you. Aye.
Paul Albert, aye. Unanimous, send it to the select board. I seem to have lost my agenda, so what's next? Correspondence or?
Oh, sixteen eighty-eight.
Oh, sixteen eighty-eight. So I pointed out two cut, two, two small typographical changes to Lee earlier today that will be made. Um, one of which was on the first page, there's a sub-paragraph one kind of thing, but there's no sub-paragraph two, so we're taking out the one.
Where is that? Oh, that's on the second paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in section, what was it, three point one four, I think?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, in section three point one four, um, we had, we had agreed that the police detail would be for a minimum of forty-five days, as opposed to the sixties that was in the original draft. It was changed in the at one place where it was supposed to be. It wasn't changed here.
It was changed in the fifties, but not in the
At section three point one four.
Five days, got it.
And I would just like to add that Alex, doing a final check of of the exhibits, um, noticed that there were, I think, three emails from neighbors that came in after the hearing that I need to add in as exhibits, which I, we will do.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to? Oh, we have to yes, we have to um vote the
Relief.
Vote the relief.
You know, I'm not finding what what you were talking about with three point one four. Oh, yes, I I see it. Okay, I got it. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so our relief is usually before section two.
It's just really this, it's just really the site plan relief this time.
Yeah, but you usually draft the language that we're just able to read and vote.
It's very short. I'll move, I'll move that the board grants the requested major project site plan review under section seven point four of the Needham bylaw, subject to and with the benefit of the planned modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the draft decision.
Second.
Excellent motion. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Paul Albert is aye. I need a motion to uh approve the decision as drafted with the two minor changes that I pointed out and the addition of um, three, three additional exhibits.
So move, second.
Any further discussion? Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous, we've approved this decision. We have a little less than a week to get it to to the town clerk.
I believe Alex has been in contact with you and you all are going to sign it tomorrow and on Thursday. It will be recorded on Thursday. That is the plan.
Right.
Somewhere here, I got some minutes. Where are?
That's right. We have, we have minutes for December eighth, is that it?
Yeah. What was it? But they got, they got attached to sixteen eighty-eight, that's what happened. Okay. Uh, yeah, um, let me just look at this. Um, I may have had just a couple of uh questions here. Um darn it, um, I don't have it highlighted in yellow. Um, but um um, on page five, uh in the middle of the page, it refers to Joe Ebrizizi speaking. And it, at the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line, he referred to the proposed setback is sixty-four feet. And what was written in the minutes is one and one-third acre property. But I wonder if he was misheard, because later, i- there's other speakers or information about it being three and a third acre, which I think is, is more close to what it is. But I wonder if he was misheard, because later, there's other speakers or information about it being three and a third acre, which I think is, is more close to what it is. Should we change one and one-third to three and a third, rather than leaving it in what is probably a mistake?
Sounds right to me.
Okay.
I think it's a mistake.
Yeah. Does anybody else have the yellow? When I brought a question, I put it in yellow, and when I'm looking at, doesn't, oh, here it is. Oh, yeah. It's, I think this is the only other one. And page seven. Jeffrey Turk is speaking. One, two, three, four, five. Fifth line down, and he's, he, he says, "Look at Waze, W-A-Z-E, capital W-A-Z-E."
That's what it should be. That's what it should be.
It should be W-A-Z-E. Is that a name of a street, or what does it mean?
That's a, that's an app. It's a GPS app.
Oh, okay. I'm an old lady, I don't know those things. All right, leave that alone. Good, I'm glad I asked about that. So I think those were the only two questions I had.
Marty's an old man, and you knew about it.
It's a great, it's a great app. I use it all the time.
Jean, you did have one other. Yeah.
Oh, what, tell me what it was, Alex.
Oh, yeah.
On page eight, I think, Mr.
Oh, it was Lee who was speaking? Oh.
No, Alex. On page eight, I think, I think it says the temple has a two hundred and thirteen foot footprint, and you put.
Oh, yes. It should be setback. Yeah, so lead footprint, it should be setback. Okay, thanks. So with those changes, I move that we accept the minutes of December eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes are accepted. We had two items of correspondence in our packets. We have a memo from, to the planning board from Kate Fitzpatrick, town manager, this had been circulated earlier. But this is in the packets regarding the select board's discussion of the proposed changes to the Carter Mill Building. And the other communication that we have is from, from the Attorney General's Office letter and packet to to the town clerk. Teddy Eaton advising that the Attorney General had approved the zoning bylaw changes from the special town meeting of October twenty-fifth, warrant articles four and five.
Oh, yeah, I just want to point out that that is now officially part of the zoning bylaw. And it is on our list to reprint the zoning bylaw with all the amendments at some point when we can breathe. But for now, do consider that.
We're going to have more, more changes in May.
And a map, a map too, right?
Well, yeah, engineering prepared a map, and I think Lee's just gonna check it.
I'm just gonna check that there aren't any mistakes on it, and that's.
Another set of eyes, and then.
Another set of eyes, and then that, that's, that's ready to be issued.
Report from planning.
Oh, excuse me, correspondence. There was an email, well, of course, it didn't come to the planning board, it was from John Schneider to me, John Schneider of the Zoning Board of Appeals, concerned about the issue that he raised a couple of years ago of three car garages, and they, they, the fact that they require a special permit in all circumstances. And I had done a kind of a study of that.
I remember.
And, and presented it, but it seemed at the time, the zoning board of appeals wasn't really all that interested in pursuing it. So I kind of let it drop. But now he's interested in pursuing that again. And we, we had an email, just him and me. And then I copied Lee. And on the idea that it's too late to take it up, obviously, for this annual town meeting, but we will take it up after that with a view to making changes in the following town meetings.
Add it to the list. We.
Um, so I would just like to update you on the fact that, you know, the, I have been working with Katie King on reviewing the DHCD multi-family zoning requirements for MBTA communities. And we've prepared a kind of a memo for the select board and the planning board, which describe what the requirements of the law are, and kind of do some preliminary information, some presentation information to kind of look at what the zoning implications for, for Needham might be. Because comments are due on these draft right, DHCD regulations. So I will, will be putting this on the agenda for the next planning board meeting. The overall overview of the program requirements that Katie and I worked on, and a preliminary analysis of how it impacts Needham in case this board wants to submit comments to the state on these draft guidelines.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Lee, did Amy get my comment? On that?
I can't remember. I'm sorry, Marty.
We talked about how the, the regulations allow if you, you, you can divide up the fifty acres into more than one piece, you can divide it into two twenty-five acre pieces, for example, and my question was, why not be able to divide it up into five, ten acre pieces in a town like Needham where we have five stops?
I didn't, I didn't communicate that. I will. I did not communicate that. I, Katie, I think the, the, the one thing that was kind of interesting when I looked at the districts was, you know, they have a minimum size for a district. Well, two of our apartment districts are about four and a half acres, so they don't hit the five acre threshold. So we'd need to tinker with that. So, you know, in order, in order to have those districts count.
I thought you'd take all the districts and add them together, but maybe they still don't equal that.
Well, no, the acreage was not the problem, but I think, I think the district has to be contiguous. And so I don't think you can have a standalone apartment district that's under five acres. Look at, oh, you know, we, we can.
These are comments that we should make, definitely, yeah, we have to.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I had GIS do some preliminary mapping, which basically shows the half-mile radius around all of our transit stations. And I had them look at all the zoning districts then that fell within those radiuses, and what, how much acreage was associated with them, and what their land use regulations were. And did a calculation in terms of how many units we could actually count under our current zoning, how many units we could count if we converted from a special permit process to an as of right process, and we'll say center business and Chestnut Street overlay districts.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's almost twenty after eleven. And this is a discussion, we, we don't even have anything in front of us right now, and you're going to put something in front of us for our next meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Discussion, we kind of chose to review the writing that you and Katie are putting together.
Great idea.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a second.
I have one quick question. I have one quick question.
Oh, yes, the meeting.
The meeting, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you, Alex.
The meeting on March.
Go, go for it.
We're planning on meeting on Monday, March twenty-eighth. Jean was questioning whether there's another option out there, is that right, Jean?
Yeah, well, that's, that's candidate tonight. That's a legal woman voters candidate tonight, and I wasn't sure, you know. We have three candidates running for planning board. I thought people might be interested in that and feel, you know, torn about attending one or the other. So whether we have another date that could possibly do, like, I thought.
Do we have any other townwide contested races?
Well, I know we don't have select board. I'm not sure about the other races. I must admit I haven't paid attention.
So, right now, we have a regularly scheduled, or a special meeting scheduled for the twenty-eighth?
Right, and we have a lot on that agenda. I mean, we're doing.
And we have to do the legal notices this week, like, tomorrow, basically, so we need to know. And my only concern is really that Natasha said she can do Monday, March twenty-eighth. And she's not here to set another meeting date, so I could try to reach out to her in the morning if there's a preference of the board.
What time is the legal women voters candidate?
Seven PM. Yeah, so, I mean, they don't be recorded, I think it'd probably be on cable TV, and we can see it after that.
Yeah.
We just can't be, you know, we can't be there to ask quite our questions if we want to, that's.
Yeah, well, it sounds to me like we have to have our meeting on the twenty-eighth, because if we have to get the notices out in the next day or two, I, I don't see us being able to reach consensus on another date.
We'll, we'll stick with that.
We'll stick with that, and you know, we'll just watch it on, on YouTube. And you know something? I'm not sure that we, as planning board members, should be raising questions to the planning, to the three.
You're probably right. I wasn't, I wasn't really thinking of that, so I just put it out there, yeah.
Let the rest of the town ask the questions. Okay, there's a motion to adjourn on the table. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Sleep fast.